Good, how are you?
Good.
Wow.
Yeah. What's that happy to see me?
I had two meetings that were scheduled for an hour and a half, it's like forty minutes. I was like, outstanding. It's a shame. You guys? You did have a cool.
It's getting the head of the house. It works in one of its bodies.
They're actually very important.
And there's all kinds of stuff. I'd like to be on the ground floor.
Good afternoon, I'd like to call this meeting on the Governor's City Commission to order for Monday, February twenty ninth, two thousand and sixteen. But we're in please calls, will you? Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Millsar?
Here.
Commissioner Millsar?
Present.
Commissioner Sykes?
Here.
Commissioner Urban?
Here.
Mike Fisher?
Fred?
Airbow Bell?
Present.
Commissioners, before we go forward with the rest of the meeting, I'm going to ask that we all stand and take a moment of silence if the audience would stand with us while we light all the events that occurred. Communications manager.
None, your honor.
Thank you. Both good evenings or afternoon, everyone, welcome. We are here to discuss the Blue Ribbon Revenue Panel report and get revenue opportunities, options, and discuss those today, this afternoon. And we're so thankful and happy that so many of you are here. Mr. Anderson, the floor is yours.
Okay. Well, we got a lot to talk about tonight. This is our real first shot at talking about the revenue report. We talked about it a little bit at the retreat earlier this month, but now's the time to dig in and start looking at what the Government of Panel came up with as options and recommendations, and then how do we want to move forward. So, we've got some presentation, but I think the value of tonight, this afternoon, is going to be more in commission discussion and in dialogue. So, just as far as work session outputs, we want to look at the revenue options. The report's been out now for good two months now, so hopefully everyone's familiar with those options. We'll do a little explanation about the ten and the recommended options before we go into the discussion. And then, looking at public input, so a big piece from the Revenue Panel was, none of those options were vetted through the public with garnering public input. So, we want to talk with the commission today about exploring opportunities for public input and what we want to do to that. And then, hopefully by the end, we'll have a timeline for all this to occur and ultimately come back to the commission with a recommended implementation plan for approval. So, the agenda's going to be looking at the revenue options, looking at our current fiscal reality. At the retreat, you asked to look at the recommended options and look at those that are viable for the next, between, within the next five years, how those stack up against the projected deficits for that timeframe. And then, we're going to do a little bit of background into what the expenditure side would look like if we were to realign or reduce or eliminate programs if we don't realize that additional revenue. So, I'm going to have some directors come up and give you what that would look like. And then, as I mentioned, some discussion and ultimately, hopefully identifying the revenue options the commission would like us to explore further. So, back to the Blue Ribbon Revenue Panel. Their mandate and scope was really to look at brainstorm options and then look at them over a period of time that would resolve our structural imbalance, both in the near term, one to five years, and long term, beyond five years. And they've done so and given us that report. It's key here, we are looking at revenue options that are within the city's control. There are some options that would require a countywide vote. Obviously, our residents are part of the county, but we would need the outside of the county, outside of the city residents in that case to, in those cases, to also vote successfully for those countywide initiatives. And then, we're talking specifically about the general fund here and those funds that relate to the general fund, obviously, becoming this way. And then, any ideas that aren't truly considered in the near term, we still want to look at them because there are many options that, they make good sense, and so we don't want to lose track of that. And I think, you know, in the long term, we're still going to need options even begun with your term, as we're uncertain about most of our revenue stream. So, this is both a long term, or near term and long term perspective. So, twenty-three options, potential options the Revenue Panel came up with. And what they did is, they went through and scored these according to the city's priority-based budgeting results, and then what Upjohn Institute gave us as some elements of a good revenue source. And of the, out of the twenty-three, ten were, it was narrowed down to ten, and these are the ten that surfaced. And then, later in the process, the Revenue Panel did an up-down vote on these ten, and the five that are in bold were the five recommended options. So, we've got a community-wide, or countywide emergency dispatch authority in the near term, and looking at one point four million to two million dollar range. That would be savings to the general fund as those costs would shift to the authority. The difference in the range is whether it's located in a city facility or it's located in a different facility. And if it's not in a city facility, we'd be on the lower end, and if it is within the city, the new dispatch authority, we would realize about two million dollars of savings. Countywide law enforcement millage, about three point one million. Now, this millage is up for vote this coming May, and this is not built into that millage request right now, as we're told, it's going to be basically a status quo millage request for renewal. What was the thinking behind this one was taking like the countywide detective bureau, creating that, and shifting those services over to a countywide model, and then the general fund would realize the savings of about three point one million. So, if this were to take place, we would have to either do a special request to up the millage. I believe it's a six-year mill they're going for, so like in 2018, we'd have to look to increase it in the special millage, or we'd have to wait until 2022 to get that back. Val, may I ask you?
Yeah, sure.
Just a quick question. Millage, amount that's tied to that?
Um, three point one million, Tom.
How many mills?
Yeah.
In addition to?
Do you have the millage?
I don't have that. Additional portion on top. What's the current millage?
Do you have the fact sheet?
Because if you don't have it right now, I can't.
Okay, yeah, well.
Are you asking the current law for the millage?
Yeah.
And what would have increased generating that? Which I'll have to know when we set.
Yeah, okay, we'll get that.
In fact, they can look it up while we're talking.
Development infill? This would be with the new housing that we expect to come into the city, what that would look like, an increase in our tax base, and net of any incentives that would have to be offered to make that happen. We're looking at two hundred to up to five hundred thousand dollars a year. Again, this one is going to take more time because we don't have any development to speak of. There are a few projects going on, so we expect, and I'll get to it a little later, how, what we're anticipating over the next five years. So, this one is going to happen, and the group that worked on this did project what that would look like as growth in our tax base. The next two are, we really have unknowns because prioritizing the parking system, we talked a lot about this at the Revenue Panel, the Revenue Panel talked about it. We don't have a good idea right now what our parking system is worth if we were to sell it. We'd have to get it appraised. That'll take some time and some cost, and so before we headed down that path, we wanted to make sure we were, this was an option everyone was in agreement of pursuing. And the next one, regionalizing water and wastewater utilities, that one, again, the thinking of the panel was, we would take the services, utility services, get it into a regional authority, and in essence, there'd be a payment back to the city. And I think the panel was thinking that would go back to the general fund and fill the gap. But I know Clyde has expressed concern about that. I don't know if you want anything here on this option, Clyde?
Yeah, it is very problematic. I think there is, the reason that's up there is, as a group, they thought being really, regionalization is good and would be good for the greater community, but as a revenue source, I think it's fraught with legal problems because it is a, you can get a fee, but you really can't convert that into a tax and start, if you will, funding the general fund through this process. It is fraught with a lot of legal challenges, so it is not an option, I think, that has a lot of legs. But as a general concept, it might be something that we might want to look at, but it won't solve a problem that Jim's addressing.
So, we're leaving this alone right now and really not looking at it as the five options. The other five options, while they were options the panel considered, they weren't recommended per se, and just quickly, the capital millage, we thought there is a voted millage that would go towards our capital improvements program. I believe those can go up to three years, covering three years of CIP, that would be voted on by our residents, and the thinking there is that would offer the pay-as-you-go cap to that, for the debt service. And, you got Tom?
I have the fact sheet on the cap, the countywide millage, if you want those two pieces.
Okay, did you?
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
The current millage is one point four four nine one mills, and it would take an increase of roughly one quarter of that to generate the revenues being discussed. So, it would be something a little under point four millage additional.
Okay. You were right. All right, thanks, Tom, and Jack. So, capital millage would be an option. Heavenly override, this again would require a vote to basically go back to our pre-heavy limits, thus free up some additional property tax capacity. There are some legal concerns with this one too, and so we'll be identifying that as something that we could look into, but it's not a foregone conclusion that we'd be able to do something like that without certainty around the legality of it. Inc. of Tax, the panel did spend a fair amount of time on that. There was a lot of discussion. Obviously, given the numbers, this is the biggest game changer, but as the panel realized, I think through some numbers, it's also the one that would be most fraught with controversies. So, we're, this one is an option yet? I just want to reinforce that these were recommended, these are options, any of these options can be looked at. I think the panel gave us a good body of revenue options to look at, so now it's really time to decide what do we want to pursue as a community, again, garnering public input to find a viable way forward. Public Act Thirty-Three, Public Safety Assessment, this one would require a change in legislation right now that's at the state to add Calmazoo as one of the eligible communities. We do think that can be done, so basically, it would be a special assessment on property in the, in the city for public safety. However, nonprofits would not be subject to that, so it would just be, in essence, another form of a millage increase.
What would the timeline be on that? You said you think it's possible that we can do that, but how long would that take?
I would say if we could get the legislation changed by this year, we could do that this year yet. We'd have to see how it's moving at the state. Now, having said that, who knows how much is really going to happen at the state now with the election coming up? So, you know, I'd guardily say this year to get the legislation in place, and then it would be a matter of moving forward vocally to make that happen.
Jim, are there several cities that already have that legislation in place?
Yeah. Jerome?
Yes, there are, yes, there are.
Yeah. So, we'd get an amendment to it to allow Calmazoo.
And they've had those for quite some time.
Some have, and some, and some are starting.
Be nice to know who were the most recent when that occurred.
And this one too could be a big one, between two to five million, depending on, you know, the cost that we identified in addition to that. And then, another form of special assessments, already allowed on streets and parks. Again, these, these special assessments are more neighborhood-based, park-based, not citywide, so the lower dollar. So, just to talk about the, these five, let's go to the fiscal reality now. So, this is our fiscal reality, what we're calling the new reality. After adjusting for the new road funding from the state, and you can see we're projecting about a two million dollar deficit for seventeen, and then it ramps up to a little over five million in two thousand and twenty-one. So, of those five recommended options that the panel came up with, we're adding or projecting two of them to be viable over the next five years. As I mentioned, development infill, we're going to start out with the two hundred thousand in seventeen, and then just ramp it up to the six hundred thousand over the next five years. And then, countywide dispatch, we're optimistically looking at, or hopefully looking at, two thousand and eighteen for countywide dispatch to be offset, and that would require a countywide vote, but if that were to happen, our new deficit over the next five years would be what's left of the, of the red there, of the two and a half million in two thousand and twenty-one. So, this would become the, the new gaps with recommendations. So, I want to bring departments up to talk about, you know, if we were to look at the programmatic side or the cost side of things, what would that look like without additional revenue? And this isn't meant to, you know, alarm, but it is meant to give a reality check of where we're at with respect to being able to offer the great services that we as a city do provide. What we did is, we're looking at using the priority-based budgeting program inventory tool, looking at those programs not required by state or federal law, and that have a relatively small impact on the community at large, so what we call in PBB parlors, quartiles three and four. And I did give you a handout of those programs, just as a list of programs with a brief description. But I'd like to start with Laura Lamb, she can come up, and then we're going to have others follow to give you a kind of a real-life look at what, what it would look like for this, this to occur.
Before Laura starts and answers to the question that Dan posed, the way the statute rules for the special assessment, there's two ways a city can qualify. First, you have to be under fifteen thousand E, and we're well above that standard. The other is special legislation for bigger cities, and that is usually on one kind of a city-by-city basis, and they couch it in terms, you've got to have a minimum population of so much within a, with a county population of so much. The only big city in Michigan that uses this is Saginaw. A lot of smaller communities have some fifteen thousand less cities using this, unless what I'm aware of, and looked at with Harper Woods.
Good afternoon. Certainly, as Jen mentioned, when we're talking about priority-based budgeting, and I always think it's helpful to even remind myself, it's really intended to be a resource allocation tool. So, ideally, we're coming to you all, talking about how we can allocate additional resources to our most impactful programs. Because the situation that we're in, we're able to utilize this tool to help guide decisions on how we might focus reductions or eliminations on the least impactful programs. The list that we shared with you all is really that first step. We know we want to look at those lower quartiles, those quartile threes and fours. We obviously want to take out those programs that were required to do, but there's still a lot more work that needs to be done with this list. We need to understand the cost recovery implications of these three and four programs. We need to understand that by and large, of many of our department budgets, they're largely personnel. So, although we're focusing on programs, we're talking about people, we're talking about staff. You might have staff attached to a lower impact program that might also be doing work at a higher impact level. So, although we want to be very intentional in kind of working the list at the bottom up, I think it's helpful to keep in mind that it isn't as simple as just working the bottom up and starting to cut. Really have to go line by line to understand the impact of each program in its own right. Keeping this in mind, we're going to talk a little bit with you all, from the department perspective, of what those program reductions or eliminations might look like. I think in terms of community planning and development, we really try to look at translating reductions in terms of the perspective of our audience, our community, our clients. We've endured, you know, eight years of cuts, so already, as we come to you and talk about what our goals are for service delivery, we know they are, we come with some delays, delays that we hear about already from our customers. Right now, if you're a resident looking out onto your street, you want to call in the trash that you see in the curb lawn. Right now, you know, we're hoping within forty-eight hours that we're going to be able to get out there and get that trash removed. That reduces the chance that trash is going to make its way migrating down the street. If we're looking at needing to, to reduce our program, ultimately reduce our staffing, that forty-eight hour window might get to three to five days, right? So, you look at that as one perspective. You're calling in an open to casual entry across the street, you've got a house where the door is wide open. Right now, we're hoping that then, you know, five days after due process, we're in there and we're making that house, that house tight. That might look like a week or more if we're talking about less bodies. We've got with our code compliance staff right now, we've got our two staff juggling about three hundred open light cases, right? Trying to work the list, but they're starting to mount up. If you look at reducing the staff, you're looking at one person tackling five hundred open light cases. And what that means in terms of that service delivery, when you call something in, that feels unacceptable to you, and that's kind of the lag time that you're looking at. From the landlord perspective, you know, right now, even trying to work our efficiency, we're looking at four to eight weeks to schedule an inspection for an apartment to get on our bound registration program. If we're looking at cutting staff, we know that can easily get to fourteen to sixteen weeks to get a call in, to get on the calendar. What that means is, not only is that going to be a delay in getting a rental unit out of the market to be open, but if you have issues that come up or tenants that call with complaints, you're going to be dealing with an inspector who's got two hundred and fifty open cases with a sixteen-week backlog, trying to do their best to get to you, but not probably doing very well with that, with that workload. We talk about from a contractor perspective, the notion of infill development being a compelling tool for us to try to look at attracting new revenue. We know in order to usher in new infill development, we need to be really tight on our timelines, what it looks like to bring people in for a project review meeting, or getting them into the planning commission, or getting in for site plan review. Right now, we're hoping about a four-week timeframe, someone comes to us, we can get them on a planning commission agenda or zoning board of appeals agenda. That can easily jump to a two-month window or more if we're looking at production of staff. From a site plan review standpoint, we're hoping everything goes smoothly. We're at three weeks right now. That could easily get to six weeks to eight weeks if we're looking at staff production. I also want to talk a little bit about our trade division, which I think through our ERI process, you know, we've already looked at going from two inspectors per trade down to one. What that means is, if we have somebody out, we either aren't scheduling inspections or we're looking at contracting out. So, we're at pretty much a minimal staffing level in that division, and where we're doing things now to help with emergency inspections, or kind of doing pre-meetings to help streamline someone's process, we have those kind of opportunities. So, I certainly want to just give you a sampling of, that we anticipate, and we try to do the best we can to continue to deliver those services, we have to be very, very mindful of what those reductions might mean in terms of personnel and what that might mean as a community member. So, with that, I can pause and bring on our other department heads to kind of bring in their characters as well. Chuck, does it stay up here, don't you think we want to just kind of come up and back?
Just come up.
I don't know if you have a preference, but nobody else moved, so.
I don't know if you have a preference, but nobody else moved, so. So with regard to, good afternoon, by the way. With regard to Carson Recreation, like Laura mentioned, looking at Quartile Three and Four, some of the programs in Quartile Four generate fairly significant revenue and we feel that by raising the fees a little bit, we can get those probably to break even. So probably doesn't make a lot of sense to cut a program that's almost break even as it is. One of the programs in Quartile Four that might have to be eliminated would be a family fitness in the parks. That program is partially grant funded. We can certainly look at grant doors to fund that down the road and partnerships obviously could help with that. Another program that actually falls in Quartile Three would be inclusive recreation. That one doesn't generate a significant amount of revenue. And then we have a new program in 2016, we were looking to start and will, but the future of that program would again be reliant on grant funding and that's a supervised playground program where we're looking to engage the youth in certain areas of the community to get them into a safe area of snacks, programs, get them moving, exercise and then get them busy. So with regard to the parks side of the operations, if you'll recall, back in, I think it was 2010, mowing was contracted out, took a number of full-time positions, eliminated those. Based on what we'd like to complete in the parks, we're about a 3,000 hour deficit. So what you might see if we were to make further cuts on the park side of things is it would take longer to respond to building issues, graffiti, repairs, the emergency type things that we get a lot of call on brush and debris in boulevards. It's just going to take longer to get to those things because guys have a lot on their plate as to all of those things. So, you know, I spoke with you about Kick Pool, that was one that we know is fairly heavily subsidized, probably need to look at that as an opportunity. There are some other ways we've been successful with looking at our program fees and making sure that they're in line with the fees that other people are charging. But that's one of the reasons people pay their taxes is they want those affordable programs that we offer. So we can certainly raise fees, but then, you know, we're going to feel that, people are going to let us know that they don't like that. So that's an option as well.
So obviously with public services department or the Quartile Three and Four that were listed on your attachment that you can see from the city manager, there are just a few programs listed on that. There are any other programs that we did to accomplish or mandated programs. But please be aware that though they're just a few programs, that you have to consider that you will have to look at Quartile One and Two. So you will have to look at the fleet maintenance, yeah, city street maintenance that are snow removal and policies. Right now, we've got a 24 hour fair policy, street policy that will have to move to 48 hours. Local streets is 48, probably move to 72. These street removal, the sweeper, you know, just the fact that right now we have three sweepers out there, but considering that, we will have to look at staff, we will have these sweepers out there. So if you're looking at the light piece where you've got the trash going in the street, you can have more light in the street. That will plug your storm sewers, so the storm sewer will flood, will flood. And so that's going to be a problem with travels. Obviously, if you send the sewer renewal, that impacts, you know, being able to get to work, being able to get to school, to get your place of work, to just handling your emergency vehicles, being able to get to their locations. Infrastructure repairs, if we're not doing our maintenance, we have an example of Seacole that might look like of if you need to do repairs on Seacole, you know, or the parks or our citywide maintenance, our buildings that we have, our trucks, our equipment, our public safety cars, our safety vehicles, they would all be impacted. Those are all general fund items. But it crosses over to our water and wastewater too because our staff is so interdependent on each other with the amount of staff levels that we reduce with over the years. ERI, we lost 48 staff members. So we utilize our staff from across, you know, from the streets to the water, to the waste water, reduced every aspect. So we just wanted to be clear that, you know, all our programs are interlinked, whether it's mandated, community days, programs. They would have a large impact to all of our residents.
Director, specifically, go on to the list before us.
The holiday decorations would be the holiday events that we have over Thanksgiving weekends or our Christmas events and our New Year's event. The decorating of the entire downtown, we use our forest reggae for that, seeing the lights. So that would be obviously a program that we would look at that does not mean that you want to be close to that, because we have to look at the forest green, the porcelain, the forest, the tree, the trees, being able to, you know, take down that most trees and take care of the stumps and replant trees that we could afford again, that's all our different plots. And the other was the maintenance, so the gateway maintenance, that's critical as well as obviously our railway, that's maintenance in railway areas right next to the streets and our city properties. And so if we did not do our maintenance, we would not be in compliance with our ordinances and it would not be a second reason for welcoming to developers who do not entertain our gateways into the city of Calmazoo.
So, how long are you, Quartile Four, it says snow melt.
Snow melt, snow melt is another item that we have. It's in Quartile, it's downtown to snow melt. So that's not something that we receive 100% reimbursement on, so it's something that we hope look at. So we would have to look at that because that's aging right now, it's 20 years old. So for complete replacement of that, it would be quite expensive and it's very expensive to maintain.
So how many employees have you lost over the last few years?
Over the last three years, four years, we have lost 52.
52 employees?
Other questions?
Maybe we need another four in the last two years. For a general.
Finally, Chief, happy.
Good evening. Just in an effort to kind of frame a discussion this evening, at least in my terms, and as you look at our Quartile Three, Quartile Four programs, many of these is because I like to look at our tasks by and large, not 100% of what most are task oriented things that we do. But as I like to echo what Director Lamb has said, while many of our posts may facilitate these Quartile Three and Four, they also are facilitating Quartile One, very important, very critical for services that we provide to the city. And at the end of the day, it's about people. It's about all kinds of people that come in many forms, in many ways, have many different positions and occupy many different areas of the city. It's about our employees, it's about our neighborhoods, it's about our residents and what we're able to provide to them and for them in a manner of public safety services. So just for some perspective, since 2008, which is the year that I came here as Public Safety Chief, through our budget reductions that we've been going through since that time, we have about 85,000 less hours of work that's being done than were at that time in 2008 based on staff reductions. That's 85,000 hours that's not getting done. That's relationships, that's positive contacts, that's all kinds of things that we do in the city. So just trying to kind of put it into a matter of perspective. If we're to go down the path that's projected, and then again, backing up the city managers, we're not here to say doom and gloom, create some type of catastrophic narrative that if we don't do this, then we're going to die and things of that are going to happen. We've never done that. I think we've been very responsible and professional in the manner in which we come before you and talk about our services. But what I can say is, is if you continue down the path, what that means for public safety is 20 more than you ever take. That's 20 public safety officers, that's entire divisions, that's entire platoons of men and women that go out and do the work every day. You can take that 20 and eliminate criminal investigations division. You can take that and eliminate every community police officer we have among our house division. So that is significant. That would significantly hamper the manner in which we could provide public safety services to this community. And I say that very respectfully, but it is, it's the reality that I think is before us. You know, when we went through the ERI and we went through all those strategic alignment plan, and my suggestion at the time was to go down to 215, doing a very thorough and responsible analysis, being fair to the process, not being protective of my own department, just trying to be fair to the situation before us. And that goes five below that to two times because that was our reality that we had to face. So I just wanted to kind of put those data sets in your mind as you go forward and contemplate where we need to go for this city. You know, we're Calmazoo, we're good. I really truly believe that. And what can we do to continue to be good and be better and great that I know we can? We have so much potential here. We have such an ethic to this city that I've seen since my time here. I think everyone truly cares, they want what's best for this city. And I know you two, you will be sitting here spending a whole lot of time that you really don't get paid enough for, quite frankly, because you believe in what you do and you care about the city. And I know my department heads, or that department head is behind me, my boss, W. City Managers. We all care. And we want what's best for the city. But the time has come and I think we're at a critical juncture in the history of this city and you know that. I'm not telling you anything you don't know, so my presence won't be told. But I just think that it's time we push forward and do what's best for this city, do what's right for the city, whatever we can do to make that happen. Might be happy to answer your questions.
So Chief, since you've been here, how many less public safety people do we have?
We have approximately 40 less public safety officers and we reduce around 10 civilian staff. So about 50 less total public safety employees or 40 public safety officers.
I understand that you no longer have a traffic division per se?
You do not have a traffic division, sir.
Other questions with the chief?
Thank you.
Yeah, so obviously we could spend a lot of time talking about this. We don't want to shortchange this area. I think it's important to understand consequences if we don't have a serious revenues discussion with our community, with the city mission and ultimately the community. But what we wanted to do is give you a sense of what's at risk here in the programs and more from the human side, not, you know, just a dollar, so to speak. We could do across-the-board cuts linked to the past and, you know, that's not where we're at. And it would be, you know, it would not serve anybody to do that, take that route. So I'd be happy to answer any questions and just take a pause here or two to talk about any current impact and respond to any questions you might have about the revenue options themselves before we go any further.
What is the status of the dispatch authority? Where are we in that process?
We have the authority. We just hired a director, in fact, he started last week. He's put together a timeline for implementing the total plan. And so I believe a realistic timeline would be about 18 months for that to happen. So I would expect, you know, Bill, you know, he's on the Authority I A as well, a vote on some sort of funding mechanism, maybe as early as 2017. And then that would ultimately go to a countywide authority.
Well, so far we've been talking about reducing costs and looking at what we have now. A way to frame what we're dealing with is to look at the opportunity costs of not doing things we could be doing in the future. Now, but that phrases it negatively. So it would be very great if we get to the point of being able to say, okay, we present the reality scenario of what will happen if we do nothing. And then move right to what could happen if we did something and what could really happen if we did the right thing. And so I'm hoping that the people who are in the audience, the people who are watching on television or taking a chance to see this will become enthusiastic about what the city could become with a vision and revenue to support the vision. I think I don't think I'm too disoriented myself here, but I hope others will speak up about this as well. The sooner we can get going on a positive vision for the city, the sooner we can really start to feel that we have confidence that we can back it. More and more, the idea of taking it serious and going to what we really have to do is meeting with, in my contact, with more and more determination to move ahead. And so if I'm off base on that, I'll be glad to get that cleared up right now. If I'm not off base, I'd like to agree with you.
Okay, so. Big topic. I've been with all this stuff for a long time. Had a huge undertaking which you led, you know, bringing the community members in and the certain model that we were having with all this. So I'm just trying to, you know, and now we, you know, obviously you sent this out to us, but you know, a few days ago we got this list, which we hadn't seen before, pretty extensive list. And so what I'm trying to do is take all these disparate pieces and fit the puzzle together in a way that makes sense. One thing you can do at this moment, as you can see, we just got this list, you can go way down the leads here, you can say, you can look at any one of these items and talk about that one, okay? Can I find something on here? I personally don't think we should be doing it. All right, well then you can bring that, maybe you can, I can find a couple of things on here. Why are we doing this particular thing? Why is public safety doing a reading program, exactly? And we could talk about that. We've got enough things on this list, you know, we can talk about. We got enough things on this list, you know, we could talk about that for the next, you know, either meeting every day or for the next year or something. So, there's that, if I could just add, and being that there's no dollar figures there, and I'm not sure when it says, when the chief says that he's brought programs, but still, so it's not, to me, it doesn't meet his budget for that. It's really saving you a dollar necessarily, because of what we're trying to determine to do and give you a priority of production, but not necessarily a priority of a dollar. So, I guess one bad, that is. Yeah, but like you're saying, and it's still, as everybody said, you know, they don't stand alone either. You can't, maybe you can't go in and just, you know, take, cut this little piece out because it's all intertwined, this person happens to be, he got a regular job and can do ninety-nine other things anyway, they just have to spend one percent of their time doing this, which is a good thing. So, that's very difficult to do also. So, and there could be other broader, so I start, sorry, I'm gonna go off a little bit. Like, so I think, look at this list, and I think about that in a variety of ways. I can think, well, okay, there's one way, you know, we go deep. You know, you go way down in the weeds and you start slinging through this. Okay, that gives us fifteen dollars, that gives us a hundred dollars, and that sort of thing. Which really seems like more of a staff activity to me than commission. I don't want to go through every, because no, no, none of us can be expert in every one of those things. Okay, now, we'll look, you know, the water department, I don't want them to do this anymore, public safety don't want to do this. But that doesn't seem to make sense to me. So, it seems like, I, I'm very much dependent on, on the, one piece of it is specific recommendations. If, here's what we'd look at, not, here's not just a list, but here's what ultimately we'd have to recommend, I mean, that would help me a lot. And then just on this side of things, there's another thing that I think about is that we got the specifics, but then, what about the different thinking about different things? You know, like cost recovery. I know we do a ton of cost recovery in community development. So, if we're doing cost recovery in any way, why are we talking about cutting general fund? I don't know how the cost recovery works. I mean, do we charge for only fifty percent of the cost of actual inspections? I know we charge for every inspection, you know, so is the cost recovery not full cost recovery there? Do you know what I'm saying? It's more kind of a philosophical approach to our activities in, in terms of the cost recovery side. And then the, I guess, other question relating to that is, is there some, is this an opportunity to think in a whole new way about some of the things we do that we have been doing? Oh, yeah, we don't want to stop doing that, but is this our opportunity to think about that? So, I'm trying to like climb from these little expenses and get back up into that thing just for myself. And then I think one thing that there's a commitment to, I, I don't know what it will end of the day, I don't know what it will come to, and I know we got limited staff resources to think and rethink what we're doing. But, but way back some years ago now, when we went to the project, P P, P B B? P B B, okay, yeah. Right, right. B, right. Went to that, we talked about that, it wasn't, it was certainly like resource allocation, like Laura talked about. We also looked about using it as a tool, because some places have. So, these guys came in and said, it can be used as a tool to evaluate for, what was it, cutting it, I guess, for lack of a better term, you know, just for a way to look at maybe what you shouldn't be doing. And they, they mentioned this, the folks who presented about it, is it some municipalities have found programs for, well, hey, they're doing this program, but it just turns out, you know, acting nonprofits doing it too, and we don't need, you know, we don't have to both be doing those things. So, it seemed like those things were found also. So, we sort of had this stream of thinking from priority-based budgeting, and then that seemed to be somewhat reinforced by some of the conversations that came out of your, you know, illustrious panel, really. I mean, of some big thinkers and deeply involved community members pushed us back on expense side. We got some of that. So, I mean, I just feel a sense that we have been committed and we've got, and what can we out, which we've done already, some push, you know, this has got to be incorporated here, I think, on the expense side. And so, with that idea in mind, you know, and then I see this today, well, we got a few days ago, but, you know, we're talking about it today, it's like, I mean, it's either one way or the other. We say, hey, look at that, there's basically nothing to cut. You know, that's one thing. Or, we can really say, we've really gone through this and, and, you know, we need some new thinking about it, you know, maybe we should, I don't know, we should be contracting out all our inspections, or why aren't we part of CBO instead of, you know, having our own, you know, in-house, you know, trade inspectors, those kinds of things. And I know that's time because I've been thinking about all that, but it seems like we, we owe the community, and we owe the panel, and we owe ourselves some way to think about the expense side. And I, I really appreciate that, that you put your memo out with this when you sent it out, which I don't think came to us in our package here. Because one of the things that's hardest about that is when you're talking about that and when you're having those discussions with staff, in essence, you might be sitting at a table like this, and you might be saying, well, I don't think you should have your job anymore. You know, and that's a hard thing to do from inside, and it's hard to talk about, you know, in a way that doesn't start hacking away at morale way to way, and, you know, and all kinds of other horrible effects that happen out of that. And I know you're dealing with that, and that's where you tried to address that letter, hey, this is, you know, this right away, we're gonna start saying, oop, I'm free, so I'm gonna go to the job. And so, I can't say I have any answers to that about the best way to do that. That's where I get over to the first time, this, you know, we've talked about this for a while, we owe it something. What's the best way to give it its due, so that we feel that, I mean, that we've, you know, been fair and as objective as possible about that? What I'm concerned, it's gonna be, I'm going to believe, maybe the first step seems to be necessary to the process as we continue on to revenue expansion this year. Is that a fair question?
Yeah, and just off the top of my head, I could think, you know, this is our first year of priority-based budgeting.
Yeah.
So, this tool is new to us.
Yes.
We're, we're trying to use it in a, in a way that shows, or it shows programs around impact. And really, this, what's on these pages are programs that, in the universe of all the things we as a city provide, are of the lower impact. Now, many of them, and why we, we don't have dollars and why there's so many is, we'd have to really go program by program, and some of these are, we would do, we want to do anyway. So, you know, we may do it differently, but we're trying to do the programs that are at risk of either elimination, and much like we talked about with implementing priority-based budgeting, looking for potentially partners, so if not the city, are there other partners out there? That's all gonna happen as we continue to roll through priority-based budgeting and its implementation next year. I mean, you can think of this as a first budget meeting for developing the 2017 budget here in, in the February, because we're talking about what the budget looks like, what's at risk. We could, you know, go that route, and we will. There are programs on the governance side, so this, this is, these are the community programs. We have a whole set of programs internal that help the organization. We're already looking at, I believe, a good ten, thirteen on that side to redo differently, you know, on the efficiency side and all. So, we're gonna continue doing this and looking at these things differently. I think the bigger point around our revenue, and a point that was trying to make with revenue panel is, we're not gonna cut ourselves to prosperity. I mean, you mentioned, we're already a stressed-out organization that has lost, you know, upwards of a hundred and plus employees over the last few years. And that's the reality we have right now. You know, that the pay, the benefits, all of that, we're trying to keep and attract talent, you know, grow the organization reasonably. We're not gonna do that in the mindset of, you know, getting it all from this list, plus the conversation about revenue. It doesn't mean that we're not gonna continue looking at how we deploy our resources. We are, and we got to. But it's not gonna get us to a point of stability, and then add on to it, like Fisher Irvin said, you know, trying to be that, continuing on the track of being that great community, you know, having an organization to support that. That's somewhat not fact we didn't get either. So, that leads itself to a broken revenue model that we're dealing with. And we need a different form of revenue that keeps pace with the growth that we're hopefully gonna realize in this community and development and all of that. And it's not gonna happen right now, given the current state of our, you know, municipal finance structure. So, I hear what you're saying about, we gotta look at the cost side. We will, we do. But to look at it as in depth, to get to upwards of three million dollars a year, you know, that's gonna be, that's gonna be painful, and that's what we tried to demonstrate here today with, you know, in an American form.
Fisher, you clear it?
Yeah, I was just gonna add in, you know, sort of on that, that line. I think, you know, all these revenue options leave us with nothing for 2017. So, I think, you know, on those lines of, of using the priority-based budgeting, we're gonna have a great example of that over this next year in the 2017, because unless, you know, we come across a great pot of money or something unexpected, we're gonna have to have something to balance our budget next year or spend down reserves. But I think beyond 2017, you know, when you think of, of growing community, a community that's gonna attract all this, this new development and these things we want, it's a growing government, it's a growing city, it's growing revenue. There just aren't examples of just rocking cities where people are moving to and developing in, where it's a result of the city government continually getting smaller and offering less services. So, you know, it's, to echo the manager, yeah, we're gonna look at it, but then moving on, how do we grow? Because I think, you know, some can always say, cut, 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 but that's not what, what gives, you know, you gotta also look at what the community wants as far as a growing and prosperous city and infrastructure that's maintained, and we just can't do it.
Commissioner, please?
Well, I just want to make sure that I'm hearing staff right, and that when we're talking about cutting these programs, what we're talking about is cutting staff. We're talking about cutting jobs. And I want to just sort of put it out there so that we're all, you know, mindful of this. We're talking about cutting jobs and employment for our constituents, right? Because, you know, a lot of our staff, right, live right here in the city, so we're talking about our constituents, and we're talking about, not all, but, you know, whatever, that's a different conversation. But the point is, we're talking about, I like that, you know, Laura brought this up, that we're talking about people and we're talking about jobs. And then also, I just want to say that having, you know, a few of us have been meeting with city staff a lot lately, and I don't know that, you know, if you cut folks, whether or not the current city staff, I mean, it just seems really unreasonable to expect our staff to function losing more bodies. You know, and I mean, our staff isn't just at capacity, they're, they're above capacity, right? And working really hard to manage our city in spite of that. So, I just want to make sure that that's, when we're talking about programs, we're, you know, cutting programs, we're talking about cutting jobs and cutting city staff, so.
Well, to cut through some of this, we could simply say that, in order to have a meaningful effect on expense reduction, we could start with, okay, the clearest way to understand what's at stake is to say, okay, we're going to cut X number of employees, and this means realignment of all their assignments so that the third, fourth, or items get found, and see how that fits. But the public doesn't get priority-based budgeting, that's gonna be confusing. It just won't seem real, it'll all seem like an internal clockwork that just affects us realistically. So, if we wanted to have an impact on the public opinion of what the city's strengths are in, it would be probably more easy to understand to simply say we're going to drop some very visible, one or more very visible programs or functions to somehow give the public the feeling that we have in fact reached the bone. I'd say, we've already reached the bone, get over it, and stop trying to pretend that there's more cuts available. We cannot survive at the level we are now with the revenue we have. So, the sooner we get that through the public, and all the people who complained about it, who didn't understand fully the situation in that revenue panel, where the staff group wanted to keep running, and that is heard, but they, they had lots of trouble, and I'm not sure they struggled fully at the end, or we would have gotten some more useful information from the control. So, I'm just ready to sit here and continue wringing my head. I'd like to start thinking about a timeline for when we're gonna have something that goes on the ballot, you know, some package of proposals, if the city is going to either accept or reject. If we can work back from that goal, what milestones we need to get to that goal, there'll be a kind of a thumbs up or thumbs down on the future of Kalamazoo. Even will respond to that, because all of your pussy foot, and say, we won't put it off to the next year, or we'll ask the state to help, or whine to the state about not getting enough revenue share. The state's not gonna, now I start to get bombed up, I'm sorry. But if I were a state legislator, and I, and I was approached by the city of Kalamazoo, to say, please help us out, we're really hurting here, and we haven't used all the tools that we have within our own power to generate money, I would advise a state legislator to say, well, try the tools that you already have in your toolbox, and if they don't work, then I'll talk to you. So, I, I think that kind of clear talk, I'd love to hear from the other commissioners, and I'd love to have it be, start our discussion with the public.
Vice President?
Well, I'm with Jack. I think we cut, we're done with cut. I mean, I think we have to think about, what do our people deserve and what does our staff deserve? Our staff has done magnificent things with what we've imposed on them by not having enough revenue over the years. So, to me, the question on the table is, how are we getting more revenue? Anything else, we're dancing around the issue. And we have some recommendations there, and when I look at those five recommendations, I don't see us getting a lot of money out of that. So, there's a recommendation out there to good get us some money, I think we ought to be talking about that. And if there's other ideas besides those ten, I'd like to hear them. But I think the conversation is, how are we gonna get more money here so that this city could do what it should do for people, should be moving forward as people are talking about, and so that our staff can get some sense of possibility to do within the detail?
Sure, thank you. Um, I like, a little booklet. I like it because it simply tells the story, and I sent this out on retreat. If we're gonna have this spreadsheet that doesn't have dollar amounts, it needs to translate into something like this, that we can be, as commissioners, out talking to the public about, we're gonna lose twenty public safety officers, here's the picture that knows what that means, you know, not these words, like, I can't attach devotion to those words, but I can when I saw the picture of the tree being cut down that was saved. Secondly, I think the panel did us a disservice. They've presented some options that are out of our control, they didn't finish the work when we have unknowns on our recommendation. They didn't dive into the homework to kind of tell us what it would need to pass public act or get an amendment for public act thirty-three. Is that even doable in this climate? So, they've given us recommendations that are really out of our hands, with the exception of the income tax. And I think regardless of if you're on the income tax side or you're not, this community is looking for us as a body to lead that discussion. They're tired of conversations, of statistics, of polls, of this or that. They want us to make a decision and then to execute it. And it might not be popular, but that's what this community has been telling us for several months now.
So I am going to, you know, all good comments, but I'm gonna push back a little bit. Again, when we talk and talk about community participation, when we ask a lot of busy people to participate from a community perspective, and I am very uncomfortable with the idea of us sitting here and just dismissing that out of hand. People that took hours in these, I don't think that most folks came in with a particular agenda. They attempted to do a good job as a volunteer and provide some assistance. And I think that we have to respect and honor that participation. People only did it because they loved it. And there may be things about the recommendations that, now that we've been, we could have, these were passed to the city commission, but I think of all fairness, we've gotta honor that work. I mean, how many other times are we gonna ask John Durham, who's a big developer in town, or Carl Brown, who's a young entrepreneur in town, or President Western, or President Calm's at Valley Community College, to come together and help us, and then say to them, you know, you guys did a horrible job. Thanks, but no thanks. So my feeling about this is that we have to honor it, and we have to take whatever the next step is with it relative to those things. And so that said, I mean, I want to, you know, we may end up getting to the same place we're talking about right now. But, I mean, you sat on that crew for a long time, there's a lot of hours put in there, and, you know, I don't know how we do it, I know it's short staffed, but don't, if it's gonna come forward to us, don't we owe something, you know, like a two-page written response to regionalized water, wastewater utilities? Some written response to a recommendation that came out of the panel? Because it seems like we do, or privatized parking, it doesn't seem like that hard to do that. And if we have to, we have to allocate some resource, you know, to do that, we don't have it in-house, well, then I think we should do it. We should take it seriously and, you know, and work forward in that. I don't think it's gonna have to take us that long. Commissioner O'Neil?
A few general comments. You know, there was a lot of discussion at the very last meeting of the revenue panel of a sense among many members that they didn't hit the mark. You know, when this sort of, you know, list with the actual numbers came up, we realized the math didn't add up, and I think us as commissioners can't deny that reality. The math in the next five years doesn't add up. So had we been in a situation where they gave us recommendations where the math add up, but we just didn't like it, I'd agree a lot more that, you know, gee, they gave us these recommendations and we aren't listening. But we got recommendations that, you know, the math just doesn't add up to what we need. And also with that, I think the nature of our obligation as elected officials is different than the obligations of citizens. These are tough decisions. Anything we do here, people are not gonna be happy in some regards, there's gonna be pushback, and that's our job, you know, that's what we're elected for. And, you know, to have citizens sort of be the champion of a new tax, I think it was a bit more harder to ask than I thought. But as I sat in the panel, I realized, no one wants to be the person that says, as a non-elected official, yeah, you know, let's raise taxes this way, or let's raise taxes that way. Because that's, you know, that's just, it's the type of thing that citizens just aren't that comfortable doing. But that's sort of our task. But I do agree, all these options, we certainly, you know, should give the due diligence to. I'm pretty comfortable today, moving forward, knowing that even with that due diligence that it does deserve, if those five options don't get us what we need, I mean, I believe, you know, I sort of addressed the wastewater issue, yeah, we can put money towards giving an estimate on privatizing parking, I think we might find out we lose money even. And then we already know that, you know, you're talking maybe at best a 2018 ballot for 2019 revenues, or probably 2022 for the law enforcement village. So with that, we just, we know it's not there. So I agree, we have to give those five the respect that, and respect all that time, what we need to keep looking at.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Well, perhaps to move things along and make things more concrete, I'd be more than willing to offer a resolution here today, thanking the revenue panel for vetting all the options that they did. They did a lot of homework for us, they put everything under a common lens, and so we are all, we're looking at the evaluation from them through a common set of criteria. That's a huge amount of work that we, as a commission, did not have to do, it's already presented to them. I'm very happy that they did that, it really helps, it's helped us focus on what needs to be done next. So I'm more than happy to offer that resolution, if that's something that we can vote on today. If you need more time, okay. It's not, I don't think anyone here, except for Commissioner Anderson, used the word dishonor in connection with the revenue commission. And so I think, well, I won't bring that up, that's not the intent of anybody I know among all seven of them. So please, I want the public and commissioners in that body, in that panel, to understand that we are very grateful for bringing us to this point.
So, you know, I've been somewhat flattered, and it's been an interesting conversation, I guess I would land similar to Commissioner Millsar and Commissioner Urban in regards to the panels. And they, at the end, if I remember right, stated that the task does not meet the mandate. So they're very much aware. I'm not gonna sit here and be muffled for that, that's not my intent. My intent is that, okay, here's the options that were given to us, I'm less concerned with a hug of the panel or whatever you wanna call it, in respect that they did the work, appreciate it, stated that, now it's our turn. So I'm less interested in having a conversation about the panel. Truly, Commissioner, we've been given ten, five recommendations with five, I don't know what to call them, five additional
Options.
Options. To know that, if you take them one at a time, so Jim, keep going through them one at a time, and I'll help with countywide emergency dispatch. My belief that will happen. You know about when we think it will happen, you know about the savings that will come up. It's already in progress, it really was in the recommendation, that was something that some of you, through resolution that were sitting here years ago, said, go forth and do. And the staff administration has been working on that. I believe that will come to pass, and Jim has there, he's just an indication of how it can.
It may come to pass, but do we know what we're gonna get out of that, the revenue we're gonna get out of that?
Well, the opportunity is
One point forty-two.
One point forty-two billion.
Yeah.
Depending upon location and other factors. So there's still lots of factors there.
Yeah.
But from an operational perspective, my belief is that this county will most likely pass that. And if we present it, and if it's presented by the county, it's open. Jim, can you dive into the law enforcement, well, can you give us what this is?
Yeah, sure. This is a little different, just kind of easier to understand versus numbers. So we got thumbs up, five thumbs up means it fully addresses the gap. So you can see, this just gets a cuff link, you know, in the near term, one to five years. In the long term, it does go up a little bit. So countywide law enforcement village, again, as Commissioner Millsar noted, and I believe the same, doing something in the near term, I don't think is realistic, it's not in our control. As a long-term solution, potentially, but there's a lot of coming together that would be required between the county, board of commissioners, and public safety agencies throughout the county.
So before you move from that one, so I have a caveat there, it just comes down to not to say that we could do anything, and the village and what have you, it is a countywide law enforcement village that we have now. So this is talking about enhancing that. My question would be, it's about to be passed in May, how do we ensure that our city is receiving its due of that village in the near term? I'm not saying we aren't, but I know it doesn't put any officers on the streets for the chief. It does put prosecutors in prosecutor's office, it does support countywide patrol, and we know how that worked last Saturday because we had countywide patrol that was able to apprehend our suspect. So I'm not saying there isn't that, but what I'm saying is, how much value are citizens receiving from that village? Is that a question now? I'm gonna get phone calls tomorrow, and I understand that, but it is a question, and it's a reasonable question for the near term. And it's one that was not really, well, maybe it was talked about, but very little was talked about. You know, the village is now, our citizens are paying, how are we, what's the value that we're receiving?
I'm with you on that, that's fine. But for the long term, we're asking it to enhance that.
Enhance it, right.
We haven't even begun negotiations on that, we don't have any idea with you, anything, would they agree?
Right, that's why I ask about the near term.
No problem. The green are viable options that we're, we're tackling in the development of that village, we talked about that. The other yellow ones are potential, in the near term, areas to focus on, and I did cover them, but the two that we're not recommending for further research are the water, legalization of the utilities, and the headly override. And just given the legal concerns around those.
So there, we're down to eight.
That is a good question on that. So headly override was one that was recommended to us just very few years ago, as possibly top of the list, we should do it.
By those that shall not be named.
Well, yeah, by previous administrations.
Right.
So I don't know what the previous administrations saw then that we now see. So just as far as explaining the nuance, it doesn't take a great deal, that would be helpful.
Sure, for me. Yeah, I'd ask Tom to explain that.
I'm sure Volard, CFO.
I'd love to. I'm gonna defer, of course, to fly, I think any of the points that I raised are legal in nature. I'm gonna talk about what I found out when I looked into the headly override a lot more deeply, and which is that the idea that had the override is, is a constitutional provision of the state that says that if your property value is growing faster than such and such, then you have to reduce the village to offset the tax impact on people. Okay, and back when property taxes were, property values were booming, you know, even the city of Kalamazoo had had a rollback effect of about the three-quarters of the mill over time. So this headly override concept came along in a lot of communities, you're basically, you know, he could use that village. And they went back to the voters and said, please give us that village back. So the examples that I have found where that has happened is where a community had a village rate that was already set below where the state maximum allowable village was. So when they're, when that village, let's say it's fifteen mills and the twenty mills is the state cap, that fifteen mills is reduced, let's say, to fourteen mills, this is pretty much what happened in the city of Dearborn. They went ahead and said, let's do a headly rollback. But what they did is they actually asked voters to approve sixteen mills, which then, because the headly rollback couldn't be done away with, the constitutional provision of the state law couldn't be done away with by a local vote, the city, the voters approved adding an additional mill of taxing authority to make up the mill they had lost, but that mill is still, that headly rollback is still in place. Okay, so they took an additional step, which hasn't been challenged, so I assume it's okay, they took a belt and suspenders approach to say, well, we're gonna call this a new charter. So they had charter commission, they adopted a new charter, and they said, well, now that old headly rollback is gone, because that headly rollback was on a previous charter village, this is a new charter village. It wasn't exactly, I'm not sure it was really necessary for them to do that, because they had enough room under the twenty mill cap, but they could've done it without the new charter. But in their minds, their argument was, new charter, new village, headly rollback, starts to apply going to the vote. So that's a legal tangle. We're not in a situation where we have the space because our village is up against the twenty mills already, and it's been reduced against the twenty mills, which the state's allowing maximum under the constitution. We're not in a position where we can raise it beyond the twenty mills to pick up the difference. And, you know, then adopting a brand-new charter, they didn't just adopt one provision of that charter, they adopted a brand-new charter from top to bottom. And so unless we're talking about a brand-new charter, it needs to be a charter commission or that jazz, which is based on Dearborn route, we also then don't have the room to pick up the additional village. So there's probably other ways you could try to finesse it, but that gets a legal tangle, we don't really have to defer to fly.
Anything else to add? I think that, and I know the city of Dearborn very well, and she knows what to do, I think that there is an argument that if you're not at twenty mills, and I want you to, that's the magic number, in Michigan law, all those cities, the most they can put in a charter for general operations is twenty mills. Now, there are a few exceptions to that, we've taken advantage of the solid waste mill, because there are a few statutes out here that that is dedicated money, you just can't use it for any purpose. So you're gonna go above twenty mills, but there's a handful of special statutes that permit you to do that for targeted purposes. So that's the twenty mills. Sevee Kalamazoo says twenty mills. If we were, I would argue that if we were at something like sixteen mills, and we had still that statutory four mills to play with, that's part of the headly override, we could probably go up to twenty mills. But we don't have that ability. That now leads us into the question is, can we go to the voters and say, voters, we understand headly caused us to roll this back to nineteen point two seven, we want to capture that other point seven three, and this is straightforward vote, can you permit us to go back up to twenty mills? There is a legal question with, you can do it. Now, I know the city of Mackinac City didn't, but they put that on the ballot, but it wasn't challenged because the proposal failed. So there's no reason for anybody to challenge that, it's a fail. And there's the rub. There is no case law, there's arguments, I'm gonna tell you, there's arguments both ways, and nobody has gotten a court decision to say which one's right. So I suppose it's any attorney's guess as to where this may end up. That's the reason for it being a white, in that there's legal questions. You hate to go through that and say, oh, we got a million dollars more than we can count on, then all of a sudden somebody challenges that, and all, but we don't have a million dollars. And you go through an election and all that, and yeah, nothing to show for it. Is that a question? Yeah, so I mean, that pretty much gets there, but I mean, as you know, Jim, you weren't there, but you were there when this recommendation was made to us. Actually, it was made, you know, as much as, this is a real thing, let's figure out a date, let's get this thing on, the ballot was how it came to the city.
And I'll say this, I tend to believe that, I think we could do it, but again, there's no good case law you can look into that would substantiate my opinion.
So very easily disagree.
Do you have, do you have one, just on that historical note, my recollection of how it came down is that there was a generic new revenue in a will call line in the budget that was to be identified later. Headly override was one option, and this is one out on the table, but was only to be examined in detail if there was some positive feedback from the commission that that was something they wanted to explore. So we never did explore it in detail in order to actually formally propose that because there was no interest shown in getting it.
Okay. Going back to this, apparently headly's off the table. The next one? The next one then, why does the regional water and wastewater utilities? And we know that this is an enterprise fund. Those funds, those dollars apparently probably applied, if you want to talk about that. In regards to how those dollars cannot be used in a, for a general fund?
Well, that's the point. They're an enterprise fund, they're dedicated to providing the public service, water and wastewater. And you can use them to, well, support general fund operations. Now, there are a few things we can do because those, the water and wastewater do use some general fund purposes. They get legal advice, they get HR support. So you can pay for that legitimate general fund support and make that kind of a contribution to the general fund. But and in overall, no, you can't use any money that you might make on that fund or surplus money to support the general fund. The reason for that is that becomes now, instead of, the fee that you pay for water and service now becomes sort of like a tax. And that's going to violate Michigan case law and what they call, but both decisions came out of the city of Lansing. And we're going to face a lawsuit that's a loser from the city's perspective. The other thing is there's some problems with going through, number one, if you're going to go to regionalization, you got to have everybody on the same page. Right now, we are trying to work with our municipal partners to see if we can reach some type of agreement to continue our water and wastewater services that we've presented right now since the last contracts we issued. The earliest was in the mid-sixties, some of them had expired and were working on new contracts. They've indicated no desire to go to a regional authority. The other issue that comes if we do go to a regional authority is that probably, and this is something that's not been considered, city rates would probably go up. That was mentioned in, back in 2005, this idea was floated before. And the Miller-Campfield Law firm, it's a lot of the same things I'm saying now. You've got a problem with the vote. And you probably, they estimated that city residents would pay 93% vote. So almost their rates are almost doubled. And I don't know whether, again, if you want to do that. Because right now, there is a differential between what the city rate paid or what obviously the rate pays. And it's roughly, and they pay 67 cents on a, for what the city, the people pay a dollar. So basically, my water and service services for a unit is a dollar. If I lived in a neighboring country, I'd pay a dollar 67 for the same services. That's because they're outside of the city and there's a lot of resource, there's a differential. So that's, that's the rationale there. And we know the research that was done back in 2006, I think, by Miller-Campfield Law firm. I disagree with that, I agree with their analysis in 2006. Yeah, but there was a 2005 study that was done and that, look, they responded, maybe in 2005, that Miller-Campfield responded to the white paper response to what's called the growth plan. Right. West Michigan first. Oh, and then, yes, it was March 2006 where Miller-Campfield did a legal analysis of the regionalization of wastewater water. Okay, just, I'm sorry. So just to be boring, I guess, go talk about the past guy that came here as far as heavily too. So this thing has been, this has been around, you know, had a life of its, you know, drifting out of the clouds there for a long, long time. And I'm glad you mentioned that there was a 2005 plan that was proposed that was very much like seemingly, you know, the model that came out of some discussion that we were having. So been around for a long time. There was a whole, there's reams of information, a document put together related to this idea. And of course, that time passes and then it seems like a new idea, I guess, 10 years later. But, you know, it was, it was interesting because there were people who participated in the Republican panel who also were part of a pain to fund this original plan or at least associate that organization back 10 years ago, who also seemed to be still somewhat supportive of the idea. And so 2005 or 2006 plant brand response to that seems to have gotten sort of lost in the shuffle. But I guess it's just a good reminder that, because every one of these things, and I know you tried to do that in here a bit, but every one of these things, you know, we just like you started here, we can talk for hours just about this. But it really does help me, I guess, in this genus position to say, okay, regionalized water, well, here's the four bullet points. Here are the reasons, you know, considered and then once again checked. Oh yeah, just reminding ourselves why, you know, well, if the plant brand worked from 2006, you know, here. Here's the reason, this, 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 I mean, because that's, I don't think we have to do that over again, but it's just, you know, put it on the record.
Yeah, so Commissioner, I would agree with you only to one extent. And that would be what the attorney is saying, saying now. That, that's the rationale for now moving forward. Whatever happened with the growth plan in the past or whatever, having the four points of the four points he gives us has nothing to do, in my opinion, to the growth plan. That was something that didn't move back then as a policy, as a policy option. For 10 years, it didn't move. Some of us sitting on the commission didn't move it for whatever reasons we decided it shouldn't go forward.
In essence, it's the same plan.
Yeah, in essence, it's the same plan. But there's, there's basic rationale from a legal standpoint and from our administration that's sitting here now saying, nah, that's not a good idea, folks. And so that's where my, my idea is.
I'm not saying that answer even has to be come up with. I mean, a lot of this right there, 2006, but it's just bring it forward to this day. You know, like, oh yeah, there's that plan again, here's what happened, you know, in response to that conversation. It's all right there, I don't think it's going to take a lot of.
Yeah, and but I, I think, again, I'm just going to disagree a little bit about talking about that plan. I think Clyde gave us the four points, which have nothing, it may connect back with other than plan. I don't, I don't want to talk about that. I want to know right now, today, the administration and commissioners feel that this, it does not work. And here's the A, B, C, D of it, there's their four points. So I don't know what we're doing with that one, but there's a thinking that that is not going to move us to deal with the near term necessarily, the far term, because too many question marks, too many things that may affect our citizens negatively on what's, what's next.
Then privatizing the parking system, that would require further research, including an appraisal that we would have to get of the system. And, you know, before we, we would go that route, we would certainly want to lessen that. That's an area of interest to me.
So has the parking system been appraised? Mr. Dyssler, has the parking center system been appraised?
We have received an appraisal on one ramp and one lot, just to help get us started on the value.
So the answer has not been appraised.
We have it in hand, it's not public yet, it's still in prep.
But the entire system?
The system has not been appraised.
The system not overall.
Commissioner Ervin here?
Well, to the sale of private assets and parking lots, you have to remember what the effect of that could be for the city. The city would lose a very powerful regulatory and lifestyle-enhancing tool if we did, if we lost control of parking regulations in the city. We can make them work for growing the city or we can make it driving people away. Once it becomes privatized, the interest of the city as a whole is gone. The interest goes to the private owners of that parking lot. And let's not kid ourselves, that's, that effect primarily. If it benefits the public as a byproduct of their investment, well, great. But we've given away one of our G tools for shaping what kind of downtown we have. So aside from the value it may have financially, this sale would be one-time sale plus potential tax revenue from the property. Just on the basis that I just mentioned, I would not consider selling property. So if there's not a lot of people who are agreeing, we could take that and offer the system.
I agree. Commissioner Muzer.
You know, personally, I'm comfortable just completely striking that off the list. But if there was maybe more due diligence we wanted to do on it, I seem to recall at one point, there was a really rough valuation of the one-time revenue from that. But that was based off of construction valuation. You know, if we have a lot and a ramp already with an appraisal and we find out just from those two examples that the market value is much less than the construction value, which I think might be the case, we can probably at that point assume that's accurate for all of the system. And at that point, we'd probably be able to say, oh, this doesn't even make us money. You know, I don't know that we need to go real deep into the whole system if we have two examples that show, you know, one point, whatever, million.
So what we haven't talked about, and Commissioner Ervin, you got into this a little bit, but you didn't quite go where I thought you were going to go. I know the question is privatizing the parking system. But we may also have a connection to development infield where someone may want to buy a parking lot to develop, which I would bet that will be coming forward someday. Because if you look at your downtown and you think about what's best, getting more tax dollars would happen, even though we have TIF and all that. And I do believe TIF is not going to be here forever, but we could have until 2029 or something that's going to be around. That is, that is a challenge too, the whole, sell a hot property. And that changes your whole system dynamic, it changes your parking dynamics. So that's, I'll do it.
And I, I just wanted to remind the question of, this was in the revenue option fact sheet that was in the report. They said the constructed value, they put nearly 30 million. Two of the three ramps over 10 years' long, there's a fair amount of deferred maintenance. And the remaining ramp is approaching 10 year old. And then the other thing you have to be aware of, any sale proceeds first have to be applied against 13 portfolio of debt. So.
Yeah, I was kidding there.
And that also is true also with the regionalization that we have to be careful.
Okay.
Yes, so I think what I'm hearing here is we could certainly, it's going to maybe part of development infield. But as far as pursuing it, especially as a short-term solution.
Go.
So. Sorry. So I really, so I have been focusing on this sort of one to five years, right? Because in that block of time, if we don't come up with viable options, I mean, that's more than enough time for the city to face incredible struggles for us to even be looking at emergency management, right? Which is what none of us want to see. And I'm looking at the options up here and I'm just looking at it as a whole, right? And we've got the public safety assessment, but that depends on the state. So, so at this point, I mean, I don't know how other folks are feeling, but after watching what's happening at the state level, I am not comfortable, you know, putting the fate of the city, yeah, yeah, in the state's hands. And so everything that's left over, even if you add it all up, we're not where we need to be. And I, and I feel as if we are really dancing around the income tax because none of us are comfortable talking about it. I know it is a very controversial issue. But I mean, let's, let's start that conversation and we'll just talk about what that looks like. So there's a couple of things that I would want to point out. And I have been very explicit about this throughout, you know, my campaign and in all of my conversations with, I think, you folks and also our constituents. And, and there's a couple of things that I think are really important in this conversation. One is that within income tax, we're looking at property tax reductions. Not enough citizens know that. When they know that, in my experience, folks are really pleased with that, right? Because ultimately, I mean, I, if we can pass a heavily override, we're talking about asking people to let us fluff their property taxes. Nobody wants to see that. But when we're talking about reducing property taxes, that's what everybody wants to see. The other thing is, and I know this figure came up a lot, you know, there's 81% of folks who don't live in the city, but are employed here, are here every day. That's not a bad thing. I am so grateful for the folks that come into our city every day. But we have got to share the burden of paying for necessary services across, you know, our county or across, you know, everybody needs to pitch in on that. And right now, that's not the case. Right now, you know, those of us who live in the city are carrying the burden, right? So I'm talking to folks who, the property taxes are too high, you know, you know, I don't want to lose public safety. I mean, the feeling is across the board, nobody wants to lose, see any cuts to public safety. So how do we solve this? Well, I mean, you know, I have to believe that folks that come into the city to go work, you know, want to be able to call on public safety if they need to. So to me, property tax reductions and also the fact that we can get some of, you know, this 81% of folks to pitch in, to me, is a major selling point. And frankly, even if we didn't do an income tax, I'm still going to want to know how we get that 81% of folks to pitch in. If not through an income tax, then how? Because I think that needs to happen for long-term sustainability.
Yeah, so I think Commissioner Sykes really hit that one on the head here. And, you know, obviously, it is the biggest game changer. And I know a lot of work has been done, was done by the revenue panel in research of John Institute, a lot of good research around this, that brand. And, you know, one of the ideas is we've got the ability to levy a 1% with a public vote and a half percent for non-residents. You don't have to do the 1%, you could do something less than that. You know, there's ideas that's been floated around about terming it, you know, do it for a specific term of amount of time to allow some other things maybe to happen. You know, I think all of those could be, you know, it's not just a, there's many variations in that that could be looked at. And that could be part of the public input, just to really maybe see what, what makes sense. Both on the solution side, but also we have to have a special vote for it to really occur, so.
That's what I would like to see. There are the options if you go and do an income tax. And what are the implications for different people in the community if we do these different things? So that, for me, is the next step.
Commissioner?
Well, I'll follow up on what Commissioner Ervin just said. Will we, will we have some more public input? It would be good to have a rough proposal in mind so people can sense what some of the parameters are, but not put dollar figures exactly onto it yet. Because what we hope to learn from the public is what things, if they are willing to envision as really worth investing in, we might be sure that those are part of our package. Those things that are really worth investing in will help us determine how much of a property tax reduction we can afford to take or how much of a back off from the max we could have for the income tax. Frankly, well, I could go down a rabbit hole, I mean, a rabbit hole with that one. But I would love to be able to go to the public with some, a rough idea of a package. And let's invite the public to participate in much the way they're starting to do with the Sevee Kalamazoo thing. Is say, with looking ahead for the place that we live and we, and the place that we want people to come to live in, what, what, what parts of this package really, really work? What parts maybe don't work so much? So just go to the public first with no proposal, no rough idea. It's just gonna, could be just another big, um, kind of, a lot of turbulence, and not a lot of real clarity. On the other hand, having a definite proposal means that it's a fresh case, the public staff will shut out once again. So somehow between those two ingredients, I hope we can find something that we can do. I would love, for example, for the city staff to gather some detailed information on what it would look like, say, if the income tax were at a standard rate, uh, the state is, is that what we've been talking about. And the property tax reduction is X or Y or Z. Uh, then coupled with that, what you can buy with the extra money that we earn, that really is, what you would have to do without if you didn't have quite so much money. And let the public decide, because we'll, the public is in charge here. And we'll, as a commission, we'll do what the public wants. But we have to give them a really good, uh, clear picture of what the options are.
I, I just wanted to, to, I guess, underscore some of the things that Commissioner. For me, to say, the income tax, I, I, I trust this analogy, for your purposes, this is a stupid, a three-legged stool. And the reason why I say that is that, because first off, as Manager mentioned, you are, if your community adopted, you may levy up to one percent on all income to city residents and a half percent on non-residents who work in the city. And that fifty percent ratio has to be in there. And you are authorized up to one percent, you could do something less. Make it point eight, make it point eight and point four. So that's the first leg of the stool. The second leg of the stool is that under our city charter, this is where, again, the city government, you need, is that it already calls for, and income tax is in place, the maximum millage rate limit is fourteen. So we go from twenty to fourteen automatically, but again, that author is, that's only authorization up to fourteen. You don't have to levy fourteen. So that's, that's the second leg of the stool. And the final leg is under the income tax statute, city income tax statute itself, that gives you the ability to set the rate for exemption. And most communities follow what is at the federal level, but you're not tied to that. You can set whatever level you want. And there, while I will say that based upon a survey that has been done, most communities follow the few, the narrow ranges, there are a couple of outliers, where they have a substantially larger personal income tax exemption for the purpose of the city income tax. So those are the three things, or the three legs of the stool, that if you wanted to, then across the administration, just look into those things along with your look at. But I wanted to give you an idea, what, what parameters are you looking at?
Thank you very much. Can I add another leg to that stool? Um, the, there is a provision, and this is if we were to just go to the full one percent and the fourteen mills. Anything in excess of what we were collecting before at under twenty mills would have to go to a capital improvement fund. And I think that's what Commissioner Urban was getting to, of kind of the more for more idea of what could we do with that extra money in terms of already, you know, woefully underfunded CIP program, where we could really step up and start.
And again, that's, that's a unique provision under our charter.
Right.
So just so that it gets out there, capital improvement such as?
Anything that's of the general asset, city hall, all our city facilities, parks, roads, sidewalks, 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 sidewalks. Stairways. Stairways. Trailways.
Say CIP, that doesn't mean.
Yeah, exciting to hear.
You got all these folks that are videotaping us and writing our words. I'd like to hear those words come out of this, which. So, um, Commissioner Roser, I'm sorry, my bad.
I just wanted to add in, you know, the deep dive on the income tax is, is even as the panel got into it, it never got into, you know, an analysis of what that means with some of these, you know, our two green items up there, and also that personal exemption level. Um, or, you know, we did a little bit of ten or twelve or fourteen mills, but not really in depth. And I think, you know, looking at the county, or the countywide dispatch and expected revenues from infill, we already know where the goalpost is at. And, you know, I think the money is there with those in place to look at an income tax that reduces our millage beyond the required fourteen, allows us a very general personal income exemption, because we have a very high poverty rate. So with the high poverty rate, we should be looking at a very large and generous personal exemption, and still gives us new revenue for, for roads and sidewalks and parks and all of these things that, that our community wants. So, so yeah, I, I agree with Jack of, of let's talk about this and not say, you know, these are the exact numbers, but, you know, where, how far can we come down from fourteen while still having, you know, some, some new revenue? Not just new to cover the, cover the structural gap. I don't want extra maintenance, that's all we want to grow. And if we want to develop an infill, we need to grow. We need to have better infrastructure. People aren't going to invest in a city that's, you know, replacing roads at an unsustainable rate and replacing other infrastructure at unsustainable rates. So how, what do we need to get up to a more sustainable rate of maintenance? And, and where does that come out at? And I think the answer might, might be that we actually could have a tax rate equal to or less than our neighbors. Um, which I think, getting back to development infill, uh, and people moving to your community, that's a game changer. You know, how many things do we see literally across the street from the city limits?
Yes.
I mean, because there's a huge tax disparity. And that's where some of these, you know, public safety or capital millage in isolation, they're just furthering that disparity. We got to break down this tax disparity, which has just crippled this city for decades. Um, yes, income tax is, is still a disparity, you can't deny that. But with so many people in this community working in the city, it's not the same type of disparity we have right now, where it's just the city residents always pay more.
So let's go back to the outputs. Which of the revenue options should we process or are we going to share before? So we want to go through a, um, review of that, just so we, all our, every staff is under, gets an understanding of what you want us to look at. We heard a lot about various ones, obviously, income tax, I think there was broad support for that. Um, any of the other ones that, besides the green and the white or shaded areas, the grayed areas, that we would think we should be focusing our attention on?
So can I ask a question about one of them?
Mm-hmm.
So, uh. PA thirty-three.
Yes.
So I, I heard Commissioner Sykes, and I hear you ask, so one, if we're, if we, I would agree with you in your statement, if you don't want to depend on the state to determine our path. My question is, though, that one requires state allowing for it to occur, one. Two, if we get that allowance, does that mean we have to do it?
Well, then, no, this, if the state does it, we still require a vote.
No, no, I understand that, I mean, I'm, I'm at the, with the state, what we're required to do if we were able to get the authorization beyond that, I know it's got to go with vote, that's not, that's.
But if we get approval from the state, do we have to follow through?
No. It would just authorize it.
Yeah, basically, we'd get.
So my, my question would be, why would we not want that in our toolkit? And there may be a reason not to have a toolkit, but, so I didn't want to just jump to, we're all talking income tax, income tax, I get it. But I'm not sure that that, this is what I would say if I was a citizen not sitting here going, did you really look at these other things? Or did you just say, well, you know, we're just dancing, let's go, just go to the income tax? I want more understanding of what that would do. And is it something we want to be able to hold in our pocket later on? Because once your income tax fails, then is this the next option that a citizen might say, but yeah, I can, I can fund public safety? Uh, I don't know. So that's just my questions. Um, Commissioner Urban, you were first.
Uh, well, I think another one that, um, besides the income tax and the two that are green, that I would, I would list in the, in the state of top five would be, uh, a longer-term one, because it is, could be sizable, is the countywide law enforcement, knowing that it takes a lot of cooperation from our, our rural neighbors. Uh, but it's such a great opportunity to help everybody feel that we're part of a metropolitan area, uh, that, uh, that we really think of ourselves as one community. So I would not drop that. I would put that on, on, on the simmer scale and keep it alive, because we may need it later. And we need to be building the kinds of relationships that make such a cooperation possible. Main thing is to be sure we have success with countywide warranty dispatch. That sets us up for the next one. So that's one that I, I could see.
Commissioner Roser?
Uh, two different, uh, three different comments. Uh, one on, on Public Act Thirty-three. My personal opinion is, I don't, I don't want the toolbox. It's another tax raise on only Kalamazoo city residents who are not exempt. It continually furthers the, the really crippling disparity where Kalamazoo resident, property owners who pay taxes are paying again higher taxes, and everyone else gets more services for free. So I don't even want a toolkit personally. Um, I want to second Jack that, yeah, countywide law enforcement millage long-term, uh, detective bureau, training, all that stuff, that's, yes, we should pursue that, but just knowing that it's not going to happen next year, because that's just not the nature of the speed of these things, so.
Maybe take this.
Yeah, um, but I think it's absolutely a great, uh, a great goal for the community. And then the other options, it might be too convoluted, but I don't think the capital millage is necessarily one you don't look at. I think it would be interesting to explore it more in regards to replacing our debt funded, how we fund our roads to debt currently. Um, is there, is there value in slowly leaning ourselves off of debt funding for roads via capital millage? And that could also come with further offsets of, of property taxes, um, with our general mill. As I said, maybe it's too convoluted, but it's something maybe worth exploring. Is, is there value in converting, you know, not using capital millages, this is how we solve our revenue problem right now, but is there value using capital millage to replace the debt funding and move back to, you know, the debt-free city you once were, that people always like to bring up from way back when?
So, you know, Commissioner, I'm a pushback on the PA thirty-three, because you just did the, you just did a little something with the capital millage. That, well, then we could change the mills and the property tax mill. Why can't we do the same thing here?
I was talking about a swap, not an increase.
Yeah, but even, so let's say, I don't remember how much this raises, but because now we have some funding for public safety, maybe there is a drop in property tax that we decide we want to do. My, my challenge to you is, if, if we go here and it doesn't pass, we're still, then we're going to have to do those little cheat just that. We have, because we have nothing else in our toolkit to go to. I'm not saying to go to it, but that's just where I was going. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't want that on here, because I think it's a double tax. People are already paying taxes, and part of our taxes, they're including public safety. Now we're going to put another tax on them for public safety, it's double taxing.
Commissioner Sykes?
I don't know if I should, it looks like Commissioner Anderson had something he wanted to say specifically about that. I was going to jump.
Okay.
So, yeah. Well, I, so this may not be the popular thing to say right now, but I don't know that I'm completely opposed to privatizing the parking system. I feel like I don't have enough information to rule that out. And, and I don't know that that's something that we should do. I think if that's a viable option, and I don't know that it is, but if it's a viable option and the numbers make sense, I think to, to rule it out while it's still, you know, remains to be determined, I think, I think it's jumping the gun a little bit. I think, I would definitely like more information on that.
Vice Mayor?
I got, Vice Mayor. I have to go, Vice Mayor. Commissioner, somebody begging for it.
Okay, so. So now we are limiting ourselves to the ten items that were pushed forward, you know, in the recommendations of the group. Is there nothing of any merit on the rest of that whole list that when we look back at that? So I, I think it's, I mean, I need to go for myself, I need to go through that again and make sure there's nothing there.
And there was this notion of, is the juice worth the squeeze, so to speak? So each of these may get us some money or revenue, but is it enough to really make a meaningful dent in that overall? Now, the other thing we said is, it was part of their whole process, none of these, we're not going to lose sight of any of these. We could very well be looking at these, but they're not going to get us to where, you know, a total solution.
Because we get the overlap, you don't get that.
Yeah, so these are the, the ten are in here plus the other additional ones.
Doesn't have the twenty-three.
Yeah, there's.
Doesn't have the twenty-three, though.
There's ten colors, yeah, two columns, yeah.
At the bottom of the first column, maybe.
Yeah. So that's valid infill, regionalized, advertising, event sponsorship, mutual cost sharing, naming rights, new authority for a service, new fees, pay to park on the street, sell assets to stimulate development, reallocate costs for fees, and sales and use tax.
Okay, so worth the juice, this is just following up on that. For example, you know, we're, we're talking about maybe even, pardon, spend a little bit of time just looking at that, so we're going to make an informed decision. And some of these things, I mean, we talked about having to go and get some legislation changes. What's, what's that related to? That was the, uh?
Well, technically, you've got more than one, where you'd have to go and get some type of legislative change. You have certainly PA thirty-three, but you'd also have to do that with countywide mills. Just a different legislative body to be willing to add that in, so that's another legislative move.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
So, for example, pilots could follow through that. Maybe that's a dead-in-the-water idea. Certain ones like you a lot, you know, we're way over, substantially now over, over fifty percent in terms of institutions in town that don't have to pay for areas that don't pay property taxes. So it came up, it came up in two ways. Voluntary, is there some way to structure some voluntary interest? Or go for a lobbyist, or we're talking about, you know, have an asset or some benefit there. I don't know, has to be MML or whatever, that way that goes, but, or is an ideal like that worth pulling up onto this list?
Yeah, this was, looked at, um, and what happened with the pilot, where, why it didn't surface as a tier one or tier two, was one, voluntary. And being able to rely on it is very difficult. And, and two, going to the state to get, that would be a substantial state law to require nonprofits to start paying some taxes for pilots. So the feeling was, again, it was, we could certainly promote them and approach nonprofits, but, you know, getting a, a total solution that we can rely on was a crack.
So I just did a slight detour here, just related to the side that we're talking about, well, voters need to know and this and that. So vast amount of communication about, and it's just been about this whole state law change. I know that was a sixty-day prohibition, which has somehow been relieved to some extent, right? By recent action, yes. But in terms of our opportunity for communication, are there still limitations in terms of what the city can do in terms of communicating, since we're talking about the city? in terms of communicating, since we're talking about city voter choices here?
Yes. We still have to be neutral. We can't advocate. We have to just be, give, just give the facts, you know, as determined by just the facts.
Well, so could we qualify that, uh, in, correct me if I'm wrong? We as a body can't advocate, we as a city can't advocate, but me as an individual, as an individual, I can.
Yes, you can. Commissioners don't give up their first level rights, but as the city and as a body, you can't advocate. Any, any communications from the city has to be neutral. And who views that would determine that?
Well, ultimately determined by, I think, the Bureau of Elections. There's a process where you can make an administrative complaint and they will investigate. And that was the impetus, as I understand it, before the legislation was passed at the end of December, the Traverse City Public Schools went over the line and they were challenged and they had to pay a fine, almost like twenty-five thousand dollars because they went over and became more of a, just a neutral communication to the taxpayers. So as far as gathering public input, we can lay the facts out there, solicit their input, and convey that back to the commission. That's, that's why.
And, and I can tell you that, and how are you, have you, you've done the research for the revenue panel on pilots. Uh, there is some, uh, literature out there and there's a couple of states in the east that thought about doing it. Um, Rhode Island and they'll also, maybe Massachusetts. And that, where it impacts are private universities and, uh, private hospitals. And when legislators were thinking about that, there were a lot of pushback, particularly the Browns, Dartmouths, Harbors of the world, oh, wait a minute, they'll go down, uh, they'll go down that route. And a lot of that proved the, that's a little bit of this for some communities. They enter into long-term contracts with some of the entities, but again, it's all voluntary. And I'll say this, Harvard, uh, has since mid twenties provided payments and taxes to Cambridge and the city of Boston. Uh, and, but on the other hand, it's, it's just a drop in the bucket in terms of even those big, uh, institutions providing some payment and taxes. It's a small amount of total budget of that, although it is. So, so that said, I think our solution, even if we have some great strong components, it's going to be a several things solution.
Right.
It's not going to be just a one answer solution.
Right.
And maybe there is a piece, it's a drop in the bucket, I don't know. The drop in the bucket that keeps four officers on the street, that's worth a drop in the bucket for me, you know? And so I, I just, I know it's a big challenge, I guess I just don't want to put it on a old dusty shelf. Not, I mean, it seemed like we could do something with it, we should keep talking about it in some way. And so I guess that's just enough on that. But just rolling through some of these other things here. For example, what the mayor just mentioned, sell city assets to stimulate development. I mean, we could be selling a parking lot or something, couldn't we, to stimulate development? So, I mean, that's not necessarily a rejected idea.
No, these aren't rejected, these are for, we started with this, this universe of options they came up. Really the only one on the bottom right, sale and use tax? That's prohibited by the state constitution, so that one shouldn't even be on that list. Everything else, you know, we talked about the ten, any of the other ones are things we can and should be pursuing. What we want to do right now is, we got a certain amount of focus, that energy. Where do you want us to put that energy for the biggest impact? These things could come over time.
Well, and, you know, there's things like, though, like the mutual aid thing, I don't believe that that's a viable one. Because I think we use mutual aid, others more, they use us, but that's just, uh, I would say.
So it was all not public, did you agree with that?
I don't know who was first, though.
Yeah, well, I, I wanted to just, uh, offer a suggestion or, uh, observation about, uh, this, this is about getting in trouble with, with the election laws, uh, concerning advocacy. Uh, this, the County Transportation Authority has pretty well worked out a, a method for being clear about when they're okay and when they're not okay. Uh, what, what typically what they do when it comes to actually getting ready to have a millage? They send out, uh, they form a, uh, a, a group comes together of non, um, elected officials. It creates a campaign committee. These are usually former elected officials and, and community activists. You know who some of the artists are there on the County Transportation Authority, uh, campaign committees. Uh, when they go to make public presentations, uh, a city official is present and gives a fact. It basically talks about, this is what is in the package, this is what will happen if, if it's approved, this is what will happen if it's not approved. That person sits down. The person from the campaign committee gets up and he's the one who says, I voted particularly, specifically to ask you to vote yes on this. Always the ask comes from the campaign committee. And for, ever since two thousand and eight, um, that, or two thousand and six, really, that's been the way the CETA, the case of the year has done. They haven't had anything.
They fundraised for that.
Commissioner Erving?
Uh, I was just going to add in, uh, some comments on pilots, uh, you know, out of, that big list of, of things, uh, that, that just didn't move forward. That's probably the one that, you know, I heard the most thrown the public on. I was obviously on the panel as a representative of the public, so I, I heard a lot on that. And, and I agree, looking at it in the lens of solving our revenue, it's just not reliable because it's voluntary. That said, I think it's maybe worth exploring a real simple option that we just currently don't put out there. Clyde, I believe you had some research on some communities that just had a, I don't know, maybe a form or a formula of pay twenty-three percent or whatever it may be of what you would otherwise pay. And I think it's worth us having that ask and that formula there that says, we acknowledge you are a benefit to the community. We also acknowledge we offer you some basic services and that is valued at X percent of what you would otherwise pay. Here's the form, here's the formula, here's your SEB. And, and just start having those conversations. I think that that is simple, probably would take a lot of resources and worth us exploring.
Especially if you want to use, try to use EBT dollars to buy your property.
We don't have SEB exempt properties, so that has to be worked out.
Okay.
But yes, there is, the way that it's worked in other communities is sometimes there's a contract that runs for several years. Sometimes it's a yearly ask and it's up to that organization to afford that at this time. Uh, in a lot of the studies, they did say, oh, uh, none of this, and this is not done in Michigan because they, they did a kind of national survey, but they did find one community, and it was about three. And I think Jim may recall, Presbyterian Church, downtown church, would occasionally give a thousand dollars to the city just as good faith. And I think that's what they were citing, uh, but there is no formal program in that pretty well.
Yeah, and that's really what you're, I mean, in essence, you're just like the Salvation Army with buckets at Christmas time and with those letters. It's, it's, it's an ask.
Well, the thing is, along with the ask, if I may, uh, get a big knowledge to speak, because I, maybe I started to keep talking about that. I think if there's a, 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 a public recognition given for, for those who contribute and by omission, those who aren't, those who are, uh, might feel a little, a little, uh, uneasy. That's perfectly okay with me personally. So, uh, it's voluntary, but with, with the right, um, public relations thing with it, I think it could help the market.
Don't get us where we need to go, you know? Commissioner Sykes, you're next, you know? Commissioner Anderson.
So here's a little different take on some of this stuff, or not in particular, development info, for example. I mean, that's something, it's hard to say, well, what are we going to do about that? That's just something that happens. But I think there is something we can do about that. And, and I think, I mean, there's a couple, probably a variety of things, but I'm going to mention one thing right now. Is that I think it is generally normal for an institution like the city to often have a default mode, which is regulatory. That's a large measure of what we do. And I think that, you know, public safety has been really grappling with that lately. You know, we don't want to just be seen as the regulatory guys in town. We want to be seen as your support system and a partnership and all that sort of thing. And I think that we need to continue to find ways to be very intentional on our regulatory side of things so that we are, I guess I'm using the, yeah, incentivizing whatever, I was going to stay away from that because that always sounds like dollars, but, you know, encouraging. You know, I, I do, and, and, you know, you hear anecdotal stuff, you know, from businesses, for example, on a regular basis, that seems to, that people interpret as being discouraging. Well, I know there's a natural tension there, but how do we be intentional in creating an encouraging environment, you know, to, I think, to turn that thing from, you know, a cuff link to a full hand or whatever it is? I mean, there are opportunities, so, and that's not investment in dollars, but that's, it's a mindset, yes.
So, Commissioners, we're, we're, I guess, well, I'm not sure we've given staff direction, clear direction? Maybe you are cleared on what we need to be doing here, but we've been here for two hours. And if we're going to continue on, we're going to take a break and continue on. But what do we, what else?
So, I, we've got three questions here. You know, I think, I think we've got clarity. I'll ask folks in the audience, staff, you got clarity on what options were?
I see their face, no, they don't have clarity.
So we can go through and get clarity around that. We talked a lot about each one, but just maybe, um, high consensus go through each one and indicate where you'd like us to, to go. Uh, we talked already about public engagement and, um, expectations around that. Um, and then I think the next step, once we get this, is identifying a timeline for us to ultimately come back with an implementation plan for people.
Commissioner Sykes?
Back into that.
I was just going to say, if we are going to complete all those things, then I would advocate for a break, just a few minutes. If that's okay with both.
All right, we're going to take, uh, five minutes. We'll come back at, uh, nine twenty-six, or six twenty-six.
So confusing.
Working.
Trouble now.
Now you're not in trouble.
Tell me your positive.
Concentrate on livability, sustainability, social sustainability. And that's the two big words, okay? And what is that? I would say, uh, rerouting the traffic flow pattern downtown, those are, uh, we have less noise and, and on the main streets, and less cut through speeders.
Women and Jack are giving me offers.
All right, that's one, okay.
All right, that's fine. Let's not talk about that. How do you think that happens?
All right, we have, we have to provide some money ourselves to incentivize MDOT to help us with that.
Now, 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 you, you're still off the market. We're talking about revenue. I'm talking about specific.
Okay.
How do you, how do you move, you have to move the city forward.
Yeah, all right, so we, we need a, we need a vision, okay? Some way that's going to, you know, um, get the public to be willing to spend more than the benefit on a new avenue short. So we have enough capital, uh, dollars to actually invest in the things that will incentivize more new construction. Goal is new construction. So we actually rebuild our property tax base. Because we lost, uh, like twenty percent of it in the last ten years. We've got to get that back and then grow some more to, uh, beyond that.
So it's not just maintaining the status quo?
No, 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 it's, we've got to go our way and we've got to attract new people here. We're not going to get the people from, who've moved to Oshkosh to come back here. We're going to have to be new people, people who come here to study, millennials. And the people who are a bunch older, who are empty nesters, who want an urban lifestyle and they don't have to drive everywhere they go. Lots of my friends, people older than me and some younger than me, are starting to really think about coming downtown. And if we could, uh, make that work.
So what does revenue have to do with this?
Well, uh, when you get more people here, you have more construction. You have more businesses and you have more tax revenues because there's more activity, uh, and more higher, uh, higher, uh, property, uh, higher, higher value property.
So you're talking about making a city more profitable?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Because, yeah, we were moving to cities that offer these things and we could do one of those things. I would love for us to do one of these things. The stuff that we're doing right now with the Imagine Kalamazoo, uh, we've got to tie that to revenue. I mean, doing that exercise without the thought of how we're going to pay for it, it's, it's going to be just a empty sheet of paper. Well, a little bit more than that. But I would love for us to, to get the people, people in our community to say, yes, I'm willing to pay extra to see this happen and I'm ready to commit to seeing it happen, not only with my dollars, but with my volunteer activity and with the board and, uh, uh, various organizations that I belong to that support. Say keeping sidewalks plat- uh, clean, uh, uh, keeping light, lighted property from deteriorating. There's lots of ways that individual citizens could, could get more involved in making the city attractive and beautiful. It doesn't have anything to do with revenue directly, but it's an attitude of being a can-do city. I mean, that's just, that's just huge. I, I'm, I, I know it is in dollars and cents, but we all know the power of, of ideas and vision. For example, where it used to work, we figured we were getting about seventy percent of the potential of our workers just by, because it's basically a good place to work and it's stable. But to get up, up to a hundred percent of their potential, you have to make them feel that it's actually a fulfilling livelihood for them and not just a job. Well, I want Kalamazoo, people in Kalamazoo to feel this is a fulfilling and lively, uh, place to live, work, and play. It's not just a place to hang out while I have a job.
That probably be fair.
Okay. Okay, good, thanks. Thanks for prompting me. I'm not an experienced public speaker.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you have a lot of relationships.
And we agree that.
Great, I'm going to throw some rise.
Sure.
Perfectly. Yeah, here it, yeah, okay. Perfect.
Sorry.
Right. I mean, I think it's true.
Okay, okay, okay. It counts. We're going to get it. There we go, perfect. Yes, now it's, yeah.
Absolutely, that would be great. Have a good one, nice to meet you too. Thanks for coming down. Hi, how are you?
You're not going to be able to speak.
So, I can't say so, like, funny, that's making me, like, a bit complex. I like the property services amount and I agree with the mission goes on. Like, if we have got to, or, 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 and actually, uh, it was Commissioner Anderson had mentioned, you know, that anecdotal conversation for business owners. But what I keep hearing from business owners is developing outside city businesses and they just can't do it with our first services. So that's why we've got our property taxes down. If they have any other, they, they, bring it on, all right. We don't currently take you to our, we love you and, and we want to know, and everybody, you know, obviously, but we may even spread it out now. So, you have something that I, I feel really surprised we can't keep expecting just our city services to, 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 to.
I mean, some say that it's
It's a word for that.
And they're getting
Of course, we're not literally out there saying that it's
Yeah, great, yes.
It's like a no place to act.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we need to share our
Yeah.
I've heard that the city function, I mean, I I rather focus on the safety degree.
Yeah.
So you have to see by
Yeah.
You can tell everything that's
Yeah.
You have been important in changing that over there.
Yeah.
You know, in more than one place. Our public safety department is what made sure that sure it was coming out.
Yeah.
You know, just like
Yeah.
I mean, everyone's
Maybe I'm talking to the only folks that should have on the grid for the safety
Yeah.
So, I think this is for your
So, you know, interesting.
So, I talked to people who don't appear to be Oh, so it's for this idea of
Oh.
You know, we're talking about
For safety, or
That's
One person.
That's
Um, you know, but the property taxes, we
So.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, we're talking all
Yes.
Well.
Yes.
Yes.
Well.
Yes.
Yes.
Well.
Hi.
Hi, Simon.
Well, so, uh, our state attorney, you know, we did not know that we
We believe we would have to
Our discussion, our
Uh, our
Where you now
She didn't say before
Right.
No, we would have to
Yeah.
So that we have
Yeah.
I'd like to see
We're still trying to clear our heads from all this stuff from the
Okay.
Exposed to.
Uh, for me, I couldn't
Coherently got it.
Because, yes.
Hi. Even though I've studied it a lot.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Mean back plan if you're
Yeah.
Where that is a
You're somewhere very, very close to that.
So, you know, that's
Yeah.
Even to me, it's
So.
Right.
Right.
This is cool.
I was like, and then you're
Yeah.
You know, as
Yeah.
Because their product has
Yeah.
They're
Yeah.
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 Because their product has
Yeah.
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 They're
Yeah.
Talking about
Yeah.
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 All right, here we go. We're reconvening now.
Yeah.
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 I
Yeah.
I
Yeah.
I think that's why
Yeah.
I want to look at
That was the mayor.
Like, I could say
Yeah.
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 This is slow.
Yeah.
I think that's why
Yeah.
I want to look at
That was the mayor.
Like, I could say
Yeah.
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 Let's go. Okay. Okay, I'm gonna
Yeah.
As far as answering that first question, I wanna go through and summarize what I've heard so far. And, um, if you want to, just in agreement, nod. Um, in disagreement, nod. That would be great. And, um, and then we'll, we'll kind of get the idea from there of what we're gonna focus on our GIs on. The green, I'm gonna, we're already assuming those will happen. Countywide law enforcement village, we wanna keep it on as a, as a potential option, like, in the long term. And, uh, and leave it at that. Privatizing the parking system, um, this one I'm not as clear on. I know that there's work to be done, and maybe that could be, we could look at, not necessarily a full appraisal, but get some of us an idea of what that might look like.
Can we play? Maybe two categories?
Yeah.
To go forward in the touch base or whatever, red and the yellow, I don't know.
Okay. So this would be
Part of that, so.
This would be, uh, maybe do a little more due diligence on that, but not full bore on that.
Yeah.
At least in the short term.
Right.
Okay. Uh, capital village, I didn't hear other than one commissioner any full support of leaving that on as an option. Um, and that's always, that's a, when that is always available to us in our toolbox, so. Um, income tax, what I heard is, let's look at that and look at variations of what that would look like, and gather public input based on those variations. And maybe that public input could also shape what those variations might look like.
Okay. Commissioner. So, sounds good. But there's also a myriad of variations. So, are you just gonna pick three and throw those out? Well, here, I was gonna make a recommendation with that if I might, um, take a Could we, um, and this is a mix of that.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to see a calculator. Where a citizen can go in and, and, you know, we give them some initial guidance of, of, here are our options, gotta go down to fourteen for sure if you do this, but it could be this, could be that, and here's the sort of things. I think it needs to be more of a, more engagement opportunity regarding personal. I have a hundred thousand dollar house. I made fifty thousand dollars. Big bang, boom, boom, boom. And then that money could go, and that's sort of a separate thing, could go to roads, could go to this, any extra there.
Yeah.
And then also doing some education about, um, if we did this, so, so I get to look at my micro side, but then the macro side is if we have the community, here's what we're seeing, here's what we're, our estimations about how this money can be used, um, if we had this, 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 this. That's what I'd see something that allows me to figure out their
Yeah, but I just amplify that just a little bit. Instead of having necessarily a package, you
Yeah.
You could have just talk about elements of a package. And so that way it doesn't get too tightly bound, but it's easily favorable, we can, we can move up or down in relation to one another, and you come up with a sweet spot with community input.
Sure. Now, the beautiful thing is, there was a tax calculator put together as part of the revenue panel. Um, it was determined not to put that out for confusion's sake on the website, but we certainly can, can bring that forward and use that. That's already, so, that's a good Okay. So, yeah, we'll, we'll take that into consideration on the income tax and with the property tax reduction. PA thirty-three safety assess, public safety assessment. Um, Clyde, just a clarification, is that back when the revenue panel was meeting, there was actually legislation, um, that to amend it, and we, we would, basically, there was something already out there that we could amend to get us included as one of those communities. We just have to figure out, or Jerome?
There still is legislation, my understanding. It's still out there to get you above that fifteen thousand population. I think one thing that we were looking at and putting in is getting back in would be the nonprofits, so.
And that puts a little more
Yeah. So they might take, that might take a little more, but we'll check on that legislation.
Okay. So, is there agreement that if through our efficacy, we'd at least give us the opportunity to go this route if we determined to do so, is that
Yes.
Agreement?
Okay.
We'll do that as an efficacy. And then, um, let you know what that, and then I didn't hear anything concerning, um, special assessments. I think that's one of those, um, off the cuff. So. 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 Is that clear?
Yeah.
Or staff clear?
Clear.
Okay. Then we'll go to public input. What are the expectations for community engagement through this process? You know, exploring opportunities from public input. We obviously have a, a, a robust public participation plan going forward with Imagine Calmazoo twenty twenty-five. Um, you know, just your sense of getting this, you know, fomented by the public, how do we go about doing that? Any expectations that any of you would have on that?
Question. Uh, is this the kind of topic that can be incorporated into the Imagine Calmazoo activity, or is there, do we have platforms that we can use for this kind of new
Yeah.
Cat trying to look behind. Your point is on the line. Um, so, I think a couple of things. Um, the mayor was talking about the, sort of, the micro macro. I think that our new open town hall, um, tool online, I'd like to talk with P Democracy to see how that micro, kind of, playing with options might be incorporated. It seems like that would be a good tool to get to the individual piece. Um, I think on the macro side, and this idea of asking people what they want their community to be in twenty twenty-five, you know, we have to be honest as we're evaluating ideas that we can feasibly do. And right now, that's gonna be largely a resource from them. So I think it's possible to try to figure out, um, triaging ideas in terms of status quo versus above and beyond, and try to find a way to build a list of what could happen if additional revenue was possible. Um, obviously, we have to be real careful not to let anyone think that the whole Imagine Calmazoo twenty twenty-five process is really to, to make a justification for why revenue should go up. So I think we just have to really think that through and be really, um, genuine about our ability to engage vision for the community, to be honest about what we can reasonably accomplish right now, given our structural deficit, and, and try to really work back. And that sounds like that's probably gonna be a, a team effort to try to get that message across and work it the right way.
So, yes and no?
Yeah. The answer is yes.
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 Yes, we can.
Okay.
Very careful.
I think the yes is by yes and.
Okay.
That I think, uh, understanding how we can accommodate that and not, um, harm the intent of the effort, I think, is where I'm gonna be cautious.
Well, uh, I, I agree in general with what Laura just said, but, uh, you've got, they've gotta be consistent, they've got to be not competitive with one another, they ought to align as much as possible. Uh, but I don't wanna put too much, uh, uh, of this onto, uh, to Imagine Calmazoo, because what we're dealing with is a more constrained situation. And, um, because we're talking about two, our main is this revenue, and how, how do we get people that's really good about asking for more revenue? Um, I would love for us to be, um, to run a, a public input thing separate from, um, Imagine Calmazoo, but always use the terminology that Imagine Calmazoo uses whenever possible. So that's not always, but whenever possible. So it's clear that we both, side note, both parts know what the other's doing. Um, but we have some, pretty short-term goal here.
So, I'm gonna interject, I think we, we have to be a little careful in both ways. And I think we need to use some of the judgment of these folks that have been working on Imagine Calmazoo engagement process and inform them with new ideas on how to engage. And then we need to have an expectation, and I believe, as administration, you will develop something that supports our beliefs and wishes and we can execute this in the community. Because you have a better, from your, from your level of sight, for me to say, well, you know, you need to go and have town hall meetings, but you're having town hall meetings, already connected, I don't know, can't be connected, I don't know. And then using the terminology, that could even confuse folks. So if we have this engagement process, I think you use citizens to get at, everything you need to get at through the processes. So I think we leave it in the staff's hands unless you need further direction, um, on engagement, I don't
And I think for me, it's not so much what vehicle, but to what end? So we can think of a lot of different ways to have a community conversation. But for me, you all are hoping
To give what?
Engagement to some end to potentially inform future decision-making, and to kind of work your way back to say, on the day that I'm making a decision in some way, shape, or form about these recommendations, what information do I hope staff is able to share with me based on their community conversations? Is it that we, we educate them? Is it that we ask for preference? Is it that we ask for specific feedback on the, the four-legged stool, I think we ended up with? So I'm, rather than looking at the vehicle for which we engage is more, to what end? What information would you all like to have to inform your decision-making through community conversation?
Commissioner Ms. Aron?
Um, very similar to what Director Lamb just stated. I think the timeline discussion that we're about to have is probably going to lead to what the public input needs to be, because whatever we decide on with the timeline is gonna direct a, a portion of that public input. Because, you know, if we say, oh, yeah, we wanna get something done by, you know, twenty nineteen, and public input's got a long period of time, if we say we wanna get something done in the next year, that changes the options, um, you know, for, for how we can engage the public, um, and, and what we're trying to get from them. So.
It may need to be a mix of Yeah. What you say?
Well, I just wanted to, um, maybe answer Director Lamb's questions in that, I think that I would be looking for two things. I mean, uh, obviously, that we're asking the question about, you know, what would you have us do? What are your thoughts on this? But I think more importantly, is the education piece, because there is a great deal of misinformation out there about what we're talking about and what it would look like. Or maybe not just partly misinformation and partly lack of information. And so I think that's a really huge part of it, is making sure that we're providing education so that people know exactly what they're commenting on, and they can make an informed decision about, you know, which way they'd like to see us go.
Commissioner Ms. Aron?
Okay. Sure.
How are you feeling on that, Director?
I don't No, I'm just, just trying, more just what is, where you think about it, I think it's gonna take some time.
So, it, it may take some time for us to, so.
Yeah. This isn't the end of the conversation, obviously. Um, but I think what we're trying to do, I think about public participation plans in general, is let's start with expectations. And I think hearing from you all about what your expectations are for the process, ultimately, an income tax would be a vote of the people. In some ways, that is the purest form of democracy in action. So in light of that, is it that we are looking for a, you know, a, a lead or a pre-vote, if you will? I mean, what, what does that look like to gauge how far we go with that, with that as an ultimate decision? That isn't the end of the vote. And that's where I'm trying to think about. This is an unusual question, when you have a vote that could potentially end in the end, as opposed to a decision that ends with you all, uh, up on a Monday night.
Commissioner?
Well, it's, it's really key that we acknowledge that, as elected officials, we, we cannot, uh, turn over our responsibility for decisions that elected officials are supposed to make. So, uh, what we ask of public input is, uh, it has to be a very specific channel that are allowed by law. Uh, but in terms of getting input, you know, help with form of us making quali- quality decisions, we definitely, uh, seem to be able to do that. But I want everybody to understand, we're not gonna turn it over to the public, they just decide for itself, ask for a, a definite thought vote.
Commissioner Ms.?
Just gonna say, just relative to your comments, especially income tax, voting people, many of these things are voting people, not the same
Just one, that's true.
A lot of it's not
Yeah. Right.
Right.
Right. Okay. Then, what's your ideal timeline timeframe for a recommended implementation plan for us to bring back a, a implementation plan for movement? Commissioner Irvin?
Uh, well, I must be quiet, because I, I talk to some of my colleagues, and talk to myself a lot, which is, which is dangerous. You will call me, Aron. Uh, if, if, let's suppose that we need to have something that the voters, uh, some package that the voters need to, you want them to weigh in on, say, May of twenty seventeen, just for, just for versatile discussion right now. Let's back up with milestones of things we need to do to meet that, uh, that goal, uh, of having it out there for the public to decide without straining, without rushing things too much, because there's, there's a peak interest of interest in, of the public in any, um, thing they vote on. And you can, you can, you can move it too soon, and you can wait it until too late. So, uh, it's perfectly okay for us to spend some more time considering, um, what milestones are needed to be. I'm not prepared to, to say what they should be or what, when they should be tonight. Uh, but if we could, if we could come to some general consensus about, um, when we ought to have a package ready for the voters, uh, because he can never be tricked. But, you know, I expect to have more than one of these workshops.
Okay.
I expect to have, you know, having ten. Uh, I, I, that's okay, if we make progress to the, we made of this one already.
Right.
It's worth it to pay. Um, so, um, that's enough for that.
Commissioner?
Well, for two thousand seventeen, we already know we're looking at two million dollar guns. We already know that. For our budget, I think that is the first official budget meeting we talked about two thousand seventeen.
Yeah.
Why don't we set ourselves a timeline here to try to address that issue for two thousand seventeen? Starting in two thousand seventeen. Well, that's, we got two million bucks down. I don't know where we're gonna be, what's the other side of that? Well, then we're looking at this, yeah, a list of things we got for beginning of our meeting. So, uh, yeah, we've been talking and talking about it, and I don't know if that's too ambitious or not, but
I think it's right.
Commissioner Ms. Aron?
I was, I was gonna say that, uh, you know, over the next year, yeah, there, we have work to do for seventeen, and then in, in seventeen, early seventeen, we should have a package for, for the voters. I mean, there, there's no sense in waiting any more on this issue. We got time to put together a package, uh, consider all the options. We already have a great body of work from, from the panel as a starting point. Uh, let's, let's get this done.
So Clyde, if, let's start with the main two thousand seventeen now. When would ballot language, Clyde or Scott, when would, um, ballot language need to be approved? And just a bit of this thing.
I would guess that the Secretary of State has given deadlines for two thousand seventeen, but I would say, based upon what they've done in the past, you're looking at, you'd have to have something like September first of two thousand seventeen. That's the beginning of, just a week or two. What about November? Yeah, see, I thought, I was confused as to what we were saying.
Yeah, so
For that, I thought you wanted to do something
Now, look at November.
Before something.
What does November look like?
November, well, using the same, Scott may have those, I would say probably, again, you're looking sometime in
August. August sixteen. August sixteen, that is the deadline for having ballot language.
To the state or
It's actually, that's when the commission would be approved. Actually, the deadline is August sixteen by four P M. You couldn't find six o'clock meeting. You know, it'd have to be before August sixteen.
Okay.
That's when the commission would approve it. I have to transmit the
But the language still has to have A Gs No. It's not a charter. It's our charter.
Oh.
It's our, it's our question, we just put it out. You don't need to go through the government. Now, there, there is a problem, and if you're talking about income tax, then it began, I have to look to see how soon we